Welcome, everybody, to the November 6, 2024 meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and electronic communication devices. Agendas and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. At this time, we, the commission utilizes speaker request forums. If you would like to speak on an item, please complete the speaker request form located at the bookshelf in the back of the chambers and return it to Commission Manager Holly Haines located at the lower right side of the dais. At this time, I would ask Commissioner Laster to do the moment of silence, because he is a veteran, to honor the men and women in uniform and their families, past, present, and future, and thank you for your service to our great country. But I'd ask Commissioner Laster to do the moment of silence and do the pledge allegiance.
Thank you. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Laster. Next on our agenda is a review and approval of the agenda. I do have a request to add parade of lights float for participation in that, to add to the agenda.
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
Do we have to notice that in the newspaper?
We normally would, but if we could add it to the agenda at the beginning if it's approved by the commission. This is just for participation in the festival of lights.
I get it. I was just wondering when we add stuff to the agenda, if it's legal, without noticing it. I'm not against this. I just want to make sure it's legal.
Good morning, Commissioners. Holly Haines, Commission Manager. It is legal. The board can add agenda items up until this point of when you approve the agenda officially. Our past tradition is that we don't, so that we have the full public notice, but it is allowed under open meetings laws. And just so the board's aware, we did post this on the Internet yesterday, so it has been out in the event that any public was interested and that there was notice that we were going to ask to add this to the agenda. But it certainly, the final decision is up the board if you wish to add it on today or if you wish not to. But legally, you can do that. Yes, ma'am.
So ordinance is different than just adding an agenda?
Completely different.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move approval of the agenda with the addition of the 2024 Festival of Lights Parade Request.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we'll put that under items from Commission Managers.
Sounds good.
So it'll be 16B. So now I'd look for a motion to review of the agenda with the addition of the Festival of Lights under 16B. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Roskinect, seconded by Lassiter. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
By opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next we have on our agenda is the veterans' recognition. And I'll recognize Barry and Eric.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Barry Tyce, the Director of Pennington County Human Services and the Veterans Service Office. And always on the cusp of Veterans Day, we like to recognize those who have served and those that are serving. And I would, I think I say this every year, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize Alexander Purcell, our Assistant Director of Human Services in the Veterans Service Office, who oversees the Veterans Service Office side of things, but also Heather Funk, Chris Dybal, and in a moment, you'll get to hear from Shane Colville. I appreciate all of you being so supportive of our organization and the veterans of Pennington County, and we were able to bring Chris on this year in 2024, so we now have four Veterans Service Officers, excuse me, and have one of the busiest offices in the state of South Dakota. That'll turn it over to Alexander Purcell.
Thanks, Barry. I've got some notes, just so I don't lose track here. Good morning, Commissioners. Just as Barry said, I appreciate the opportunity to be here, not only to recognize the work that our Veterans Service Officer does, Veterans Service Office does, but also to honor and express gratitude to the veterans of our nation and here in Pennington County. As Barry mentioned, Pennington County VSO team consists of Tom Falet, Lee Borries, Heather Funk, and Chris Dybal. They completed an exceptional level of work for the veterans of Pennington County every day, every month, every year. With the support of the commission, we were able to add an additional fourth VSO, as Barry had mentioned. The veteran population in our community is continuing to grow, and we anticipate that growth to continue for the foreseeable future. With that, in 2024, the Veterans Service Office submitted over 5,000 actionable forms to the VA. The VSO team averages approximately 233 new claims each month. Financial awards for favorable claims totaled over 5.4 million to date, with an additional two months to go in the year. That's an increase of over $1 million from 2023 and an increase of over $2 million from 2022. The life-changing experiences veterans have due to the expertise of Pennington County VSOs are unmeasurable. I'd like to shift a little bit, and I'll shortly turn it over to Shane here. But in 2013, Pennington County Veterans Treatment Court had a protocol court that started to look at the option for having a formalized Pennington County Veterans Treatment Court. These courts offer veterans who have experienced difficulties in the community the opportunity to regain their bearing and move forward in a positive manner. In 2016, the Pennington County Veterans Treatment Court became an official treatment court of the state of South Dakota, is formally launched. The results are greatly positive and life-changing. I invited Shane here today to share some additional details of his experience with the court, just because I think that every year we come here and explain, you know, some of the key points and the financial aspects of the Pennington County Veterans Service Office, but to get off the beaten path a little bit, I think that it would be neat to hear from Shane. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Shane.
Thank you. What an honor and a privilege to be in front of you today. My name is Shane. I was born here in Rapid City, South Dakota, graduated high school in 1993, graduated from college in 97 from the University of Nebraska-Lincoln for a bachelor's degree. I went into the military right after. Spending eight years with deployments and a lot of overseas jobs that took a toll on my life, and this is how I came to Veterans Court. After dealing with some of the mental health problems, I became addicted to alcohol to help numb the pain, along with suicidal thoughts to lead to the legal problems of DUIs. I had seven lifetime DUIs. That's how I made it into Veterans Court. What Veterans Court means to me is what actually brings me here to you today, to teach you, to educate you, to help you understand lives can change, people can change, and we're not all in a system where there's no help to allow. So with this opportunity, I was given a new beginning with Veterans Court. Jail is not the always the answer. Treatment and a team helps. Veterans Court gave me a team who put me first, lifted me up on my down days, praised me on my good days, but most importantly, never gave up on me and gave me hope. The team consists of many hardworking people in Rapid City, South Dakota. Judge Hieronymus, where his motto is "Show Up, Be Honest, and Try," will always stick with me. Probation Officer Manny Enders will always help you fight your addiction, but make sure you have a path to success. The VA treatment team in Hot Springs is huge, hugely changing, helping people for the better, also including the people behind me today. Care Campus, Health and Human Services Behavioral Management, to many mentors and sponsors to help us change our lives for the better in Rapid City. It's not easy. I had days where I wanted to give up, absolutely. The Veterans Court team didn't let me. For that, I am here today and a proud graduate of Veterans Court. In Veterans Court, I learned the value of time, something we all get but never can get it back. So use it wisely, for it moves faster than we all want to admit. Veterans Court also allowed me to find my purpose, a purpose in life. My purpose is to help people and veterans. I've been homeless. I've been scared. I've been hopeless, and I've had a gun to my head. They are not alone. I have been there, and I want to help those people survive through their veteran services and through an honest veteran that's been there themselves. To the team behind closed doors, no one hears about, this veterans' team behind me and then help me make a difference, has all my gratitude, and I think we should give them the respect they deserve. I am healthy and at work today as a lab technician at Western Dakota Tech College here in Rapid City, helping teach young lives to be prepared for a better future. Today, I've been sober for two years and three months. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane, and thank you for the courage that you have for sharing your story in a public forum. That's amazing that you're willing to, you come to the point, Bill, to do that, to help others. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
I will take a moment. I'm going to read the letter that Barry had sent to the commission that's on the agenda. I think that's very well put. As Veteran Day approaches on November 11th, we take the opportunity to honor and express our deepest gratitude to the veterans of Pennington County and our great nation. This day is dedicated to recognizing the sacrifice and contributions of those who have served, and we are proud to highlight the dedicated efforts of the Pennington County Veterans Service Office. Under the leadership of Alex Purcell, a United States Army veteran, our Veterans Service Officer worked tirelessly, I lost my place, sorry, tirelessly to support our community's veterans. The team includes outstanding veterans, Heather Funk, Thomas Malley, Lee Boris, and Christopher DeValle, each of whom served in the United States Air Force. In 2024, the board's, with this board's support, we expanded the team to include a fourth Veterans Service Officer, enhancing our ability to serve the growing veteran population in our community. This year alone, the Pennington County Veterans Service Office has submitted over 5,000 actionable forms to the Veterans Administration. The team is averaging 233 new claims monthly, generating significant financial support of our veterans, with awards totaling over 5.4 million to date, as an increase of over 1 million from 2023. Additionally, we are pleased to highlight the success of the recent graduate of the Veterans Court, who served in the United States Army for eight years, including multiple deployments. His dedication to supporting the Veterans Court program continues as he regularly attends and motivates and mentors other veterans, offering invaluable insights and encouragement to those on their journey. Let me be you, Shane. November 11th not only preserves the historical significance of the date, but helps focus attention on the important purpose of Veterans Day, a celebration to honor American veterans for the patriotism, love of the country, and willingness to serve, and sacrifices to the common good. With that, I really appreciate it, and I'd like to take a moment to applaud you, give you guys the stand-up that you need.
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
I also, November 11th is, you're right, is to honor the sacrifices our men and women have sacrificed for our country. Thank you for sharing your story. That's a hard thing to do in front of a lot of people. I've been working with veterans myself for about 17 years in different projects and helping with just financial and my time, and it's been rewarding for me. So I understand when Heather, Chris, Alex, and Lee give their time to make a difference in our county, because it takes a lot to make a difference, and with your help, you're helping looks like 5,000 at least or more veterans in our community that need your help. That's huge. Again, the men and women that did or made the sacrifices for our country is huge for me and I think for everybody here in Pennington County and our nation. So thank you for your service, everybody. Thank you for sharing today. This is your day, November 11th, coming up here. It's pretty honorable to be here in front of people that work so hard for our veterans that made a difference. So thank you again. In the future, I hope we can get more and more people in our office for Veterans Services, because it's not going to get less, it's going to get more. So thank you for your service and how many people you have made a difference for. Great team.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Oh, go ahead, Adam, if you need to say something.
No, I was just going to say thank you.
I've received service over there, so Barry and Adam, I want to say your team is great. In fact, it's so good that, you know, whenever you get service over there and you get the help that you need, as a veteran that I am, and I visit with Lee most of the time, you and I have visited as well a couple of times. I refer any veteran that I come across who needs help or is looking for, hey, what do I need to do? I'm sending them to your office, and sometimes they're probably not from the county, but because I've worked and I've been in that office with you guys, I know you're going to give them the right answers. So I appreciate what you do for the veterans in our state, so thank you.
Any other comments? Alex, or Barry, or Shane, or Chris, or anybody?
I don't think we have any other comments, with the exception of November 12th, we'll have cookies, coffee, a little setup for any veterans in the community that want to stop by. Pennington County veterans, any veteran, come by, have a chat with us, have a cookie, get some coffee, and say hi.
Chair, one more comment, if I could.
Ms. Hagcock.
Thank you, Alex, personally, for everything you've done for our veterans as well and the team that you are helping move forward as well, because you're a major part, I don't know if people know that, he's been the major part of this system working for veterans in Pennington County. So Alex, you've done above and beyond for our community. I've used you firsthand for some of our veterans, and I thank you for your team that's behind you and what you guys have done. So again, you've played a major part in it, and Alex would never tell you that in any way. He's very humble, and I appreciate that. But Alex, you're the reason why this keeps moving forward in a nice, positive way, and your team showing that from your experiences and your leadership.
I appreciate that, and I couldn't do it without them.
Yes, sir.
Thank you guys very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, this brings us up to the consent agenda, and I'll recognize Commission Manager Holly Hayes.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of October 15th, 2024; Approval of the vouchers in the amount of $553,322.37; To approve the second half 2024 budgeted operating transfer from the general fund to the E-911 fund in the amount of $477,781. Number, excuse me, Item D is to authorize buildings and grounds to purchase one 2025 Ford F-350 regular cab, four-by-four plow truck from Lamb Motors located at 109 Main Street in Oneida, utilizing State Contract 17619 in the amount of $54,209. Item E is to declare surplus for the purpose of online auction, one 1990 Chevrolet bucket truck, asset number 005481, and one 1996 Dodge bucket truck, asset number 93589. Item F is to acknowledge the notice intent to conduct a raffle by the Rushmore Hockey Association. Item G is to acknowledge the disinternment permit, number 1613535. Item H is to approve the executive proclamation for Firefighter Appreciation Day. Item I is to approve modification number one to agreement number 24-RO-11020300-3035 with the Black Hills National Forest for livestock guard work. And finally, Item J is to approve the chair's signature on the grant agreement between Pennington County State's Attorney's Office and the state of South Dakota, Office of the Attorney General, in the amount of $141,099.72.
Thank you, Holly. At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? See, none. I'd go to the board. At this time, is there any Commissioners who wish to remove any items from the consent agenda for discussion?
D, E, oh, Chair, sorry. D, E, and J, please. Six D, six E, and six J.
D, E, and J.
Yes, sir.
I'd look for a motion to approve items A, B, C, F, G, H, and I.
So moved.
Moved by Hagcock.
Second.
Seconded by Laster. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
By opposed, motion carries. Next, I'll bring up, I'll recognize Ms. Hagcock for Item D.
D and E kind of go together, but I had a conversation with Davis Purcell, and so people don't just think we need new vehicles just because we need them. I wanted to do, have him do the explanation, moving forward, why he's surpleasing a couple vehicles and how old they are, and then Item D and why he has added to his fleet in the last four years, or the last few years, four different vehicles that have been planned ahead, and just kind of what we discussed the other day, Mr. Purcell, so the public knows how you're moving forward with your vehicles and why, sir.
Sure. I can certainly give some background. Davis Purcell, Director of Buildings and Grounds. So in the, it would have been the 2024 budget narrative, which was presented in 2023 before I was in the director role. The previous director in his budget narrative had replacing two service vehicles and then replacing a service pickup and a plow truck with one vehicle to serve both roles, roles, excuse me. So what we have done, I'll give you a little background. In 2024, this year, we have replaced the two aging service vehicles, which were vans. We replaced an HVAC van and a plumbing van. We had the old Ford Econoline style with the shorter height on it, and we've now upgraded those vans to the taller height vans that you see with like service vehicles that you would see with a mechanical company or something like that, so they can fit more tools and equipment in there. And then we've also replaced a, two of our boom trucks this year with a towable boom lift. So we've actually gotten rid of two vehicles with a lot of mechanical issues that are, I think one of them's 25 years old, the other is roughly 20 years old. They were both our boom trucks. We got rid of, we're asking to surplus those in this consent item, and then we replaced it with a towable boom lift this year. Now, this request is actually, if you read the memo, is for 2025, and that was in our budget narrative that I presented this year. So it is a plow truck that is needed. We have, I believe, the existing year plow truck is a 2002 or 2004. It's rusted really bad along the body and things like that, but also what this plow truck sets us up for is to be able to plow the additional sites as well with Concourse and for Southern State Bank, but also replacing an old aged vehicle. So any questions?
Thank you, Davis. There wasn't really a question. I just think sometimes the public needs to know that we're not just getting a vehicle because we need a new vehicle. I liked your explanation the other day, and I also told you upfront that we were going to, if you could, come up and explain that to the public. I don't have an objection on these at all, and you knew that at that time. It was just, like I said, for information, so people knew the bottom line, how we do things in Pennington County and why.
Sure. I'll make sure to put them on the regular agenda from now on, so thank you, guys.
No, you're good this way. We can pull it off. It's just, like I said, and I appreciate the other day, you taking a few hours out for me to explain some of the jail stuff and that you were going to put this and why you put this on the agenda. Thank you, Davis.
So I'd look for a motion to approve Item D and E.
So moved.
Moved by Hagcock.
Second.
Seconded by Laster. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
By opposed, motion carries. That brings us up to Item J. And I recognize Laura, and give the floor to Ms. Hagcock as she wanted to pull.
My issue is, it's not even an issue, is why this is important, and if this is another program we're adding to Pennington County, and why this program's important. How about that, honey?
Perfect. My name is Jennifer Williams-Curl, and I am the grant manager. So this is not a new program. This is a different grant opportunity. In the past, we've received money for the victim services offices with the State's Attorney's Office through the South Dakota Victims Services Office. There was a significant cut to the VOCA funding, VOCA as Victims on Crime Act. They changed their fee structure and how they get money. So the last couple of years, the funding's taken a really drastic hit. So Senate Bill 168 is one-time funding that is authorized through the Office of the Attorney General, and we applied for this grant just to help with costs that we had previously been paying through that South Dakota Victims Services grant that we were not able to get this year. We saw almost an 80% cut in what we requested to what we received through that grant, and so this grant is a one-time thing to help people still provide the necessary services to those victims of crime and hopefully give people time to look at the budget options and see what there will be going forward, since that Victims of Crime significant cut was even more significant than they prepared people for.
Thank you. And have you added any FTEs to this program? And that's why I brought it forward, just to make sure, again, that the public is in the know why we're doing this grant, why we're doing this, and it's an ongoing program, it's not a new program. That's nice for them to know. So it wasn't to say no, it was just for that information. A lot of times, I'll pull stuff off just for the public to be able to know, because people have been asking, are we adding another program? So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Laura, did you have any comments, since you have the floor?
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Laura Retschel, Pennington County State's Attorney. Yes, the Attorney General's Office was given the authority by the legislature to disseminate this money as the Attorney General saw fit. He generously gave us $141,000. We have subsidized through grants three of our victim advocates historically. We were severely compromised in doing that by the federal government's cuts, as just explained. So this is a nice ability for us to be able to get some of that money back. The other really great thing it did is it gave us a tiny bit of money that we'll be able to use for direct services to victims that we've never had before. It gives us some money to be able to provide, what was it? I think it was...
Hotels.
Hotel.
And then I believe that we were also approved for like replacing windows and locks on doors and things like that.
Some safety features for victims. So we've never had funding for that before. So we'll be able to provide that and get reimbursement back from the Attorney General to give domestic violence and sexual assault victims direct reimbursement for some safety and housing, which we've never had. So that's really, really great, because our other direct service providers in the community, for example, Working Against Violence Incorporated, their funding was hit even more severely than ours was. So their ability to provide those services has been severely compromised as well. So this grant is just a great way for us to be able to make up some of that money that we've lost. It doesn't make up all of it. Our budget will be impacted by the fact that we didn't get that grant money that we've historically gotten on our revenue line, but it helps.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. I'd look for a motion on Item J.
So moved.
Moved by Hagcock.
Second.
Seconded by Roskinect. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
By opposed, motion carries. Thank you. That brings us on to our regular agenda items, and this is the Willian Road District, and this is a request for a speed limit, and this comes to us from Mr. Richard and Mr. Casey Richards.
I don't know if I need to correct it, but it's Ms. Casey Richards.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know it says Mister. I don't know if that needs to be clarified.
Just identify yourself with the record, sir, and thanks for clarifying that.
Yep, I'm John Richards, resident of the Healed Trail, and I'm here to discuss the need to establish a speed limit in our neighborhood. I come before you today with a letter, hopefully you have that as well, from the Road District President, Jeff Edwards, accompanied by official Healed Trail District minutes indicating a vote to set the speed limit, voted unanimously in that meeting for a request for a fifteen mile an hour speed limit on Healed Trail. Reasons for the speed limit are essential because, for three main reasons. Our street currently has no designated speed limit, leading to inconsistent driving speeds. The layout of our neighborhood with its narrow streets and frequent pedestrian activity warrants a speed conducive to safety. Recent community discussions have highlighted the need for clear speed regulations to prevent accidents and ensure safer environment for everyone on the, in the neighborhood. We believe that officially setting a fifteen mile an hour speed limit will provide clarity for drivers, enhance pedestrian safety, and foster for a more secure community atmosphere. We respectfully request your approval to make this speed limit official and enforceable. If fifteen is not something you would consider, we will take any suggestions of what you would consider, but thank you for your attention to the matter.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'd give Joe the opportunity. Do you have any comments before I come to the board?
Good morning, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. I don't have many comments on this. The one comment I would have is that fifteen mile an hour is relatively low, especially even in a residential neighborhood. Our stuff in the Rapid Valley area is all set to twenty-five. So fifteen's just pretty hard to maintain and even to enforce. So that would be my only comment.
Ms. Hagcock.
So, Joe, it sounds like in your memo that you're okay with this.
Yeah, I mean, we ultimately have no authority over their roads. This is simply so that the sheriff can enforce the speed limit on their road district, so...
Okay. I appreciate Mr. John Richards and Ms. Casey Richards coming forward. For the reason that, being part of government, you kind of get to see what we do and how we do it, and it sounds like the highway department is not going to oppose this, so with that, I would, can I make the motion still?
Give me a minute. Now you can.
Thank you, Lloyd. Move to approve Resolution 2024-11-06-1 to set the speed limit at Camp 15, road beginning on Highway 385 East and South for zero point one-four miles. Wheel-in trail beginning at Highway 385 East and South for zero point one-six miles, and held trail beginning at Highway 385 West and North for zero point three-seven miles to fifteen miles per hour.
Second.
Got a motion from Hagcock and a second from Roskinect. Discussion, I just got, oh, Mr. Drews.
So, has there been a speed limit on it previous to this?
Not an enforceable one, no. Someone, people have put up their own temporary ones.
Okay.
And I also like to clarify, it was just Healed Trail, because the other district, there's three roads, Camp 15, I don't remember the other one, and then Healed Trail in our district. They don't care. It's Healed Trail only. I don't know if I needed to clarify that.
Joe, do you understand what he's saying on these roads, or does it matter? Because then if we're changing somebody else's...
All in one, or?
Let me look at the resolution here.
Sorry.
Nope, that's okay. It's a good question.
It says, "Wheel-in trail beginning at 385 East to South, point one-six miles, and Heath Trail beginning at 385 West." So you're...
Do you have a copy of the resolution, Lloyd?
I've got the motion.
I'll give you the document. Throw it at the back.
Mr. Chair.
Right there.
Go ahead, Ron.
So these roads are all, I recall when Rich Moore subdivided that area, they're all dead end, and they're relatively short distances, so...
Correct.
I think that fifteen miles an hour is the right speed, and if that doesn't work, you can always amend it.
We would have to rewrite the resolution, because it does have all three of those roads on there. You know, essentially, like I said earlier, this is, this allows the sheriff to enforce the speed limit on those roads, so...
So, what I would say is, first, thank you guys for your hard work in bringing this forward. I think what we probably need to do is a substitute motion to put this on our next agenda with the rewritten of the resolution to specify that area, because that's, you guys did the work on that area. Thank you for catching that, sir. That was very good.
If I, Mr. Chair, if I may, I mean, if they're not in opposition of this, I mean, you could certainly just put the fifteen mile an hour speed limit on there, and you could be done with it today.
Yeah, I think everyone in the district would agree, we could just put it on that. Everyone is agreement with fifteen, the whole district, but the speed limit would just go on our road.
Okay, so the motion on the floor would just need to be adjusted to, if the motion maker's okay with that, it would be just for Heath Trail, the point one-six miles on Heath Trail, beginning at 385 West, north of point three-seven miles to fifteen miles per hour.
That's the only one you want on there, sir?
Correct.
Okay. That'd be my motion.
Motion, that's your motion? The motion maker's okay with that?
I'm good with the second.
Okay, so motion's been amended?
We still have to rewrite the resolution.
Yes.
The resolution's not, so the resolution will need to come back in front of you guys at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, now you got me confused on procedurally. We adjusted the motion, but bring it back at the next meeting?
Because the resolution, you'd have to get Tyler or Jay down here to figure out exactly how that would go with the advertisement of the resolution, because the resolution was advertised with all three of those.
That was.
And if you're only going to approve it for the one and not all three, I don't know the legalities of how that all plays out. So, because it was advertised with the three, and you're only going to go with the one...
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
And it is a...
Mr. Chair, can I have a question for clarification? So did I understand correctly, everyone was okay with it, right? Is that what you understand?
Correct, yep.
So all three roads are okay with it?
Yeah.
But if we leave the resolution as it is, it could go into effect if they only post a speed limit on the one, but they don't post a change speed limit on the others, does that matter?
It should not. At a later date, if the other roads you felt needed to be posted, you could then post it and not have to come back, right? And leave the resolution and the motion as is. Would be my understanding.
I think that's the better option, is to leave the motion and the resolution as is, because if for some reason in a year, you decide, wait a minute, they all want to be at fifteen miles an hour, you don't have to come back here and go through the process. You've already got the resolution and everything done, and you just didn't post the sites. That's my input.
I apologize. That's what I was trying to explain earlier.
I would look to the motion maker and...
I agree, I agree with what Travis is saying, because if they want to post it at fifteen or change it or whatever, they're going to come back to us if it's too low or whatever. So I don't, I don't think they're going to mind in residential that people have to slow down.
Okay, so you go back to your original motion, as you stated, and the seconders okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, sir, you're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Are you sure?
I thank you very much. Sometimes we get conversations, and we have to have some communication to work through them.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it, and bringing that up. So now, the other residents, when you talk to them, you can tell them that this is, that they can do it, and if they are not okay with it, they can appeal it to us. So with that being said, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next, this brings us up to items from the auditor.
Good morning, Cindy.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Cindy Moller, Pennington County Auditor. The first one that we have before you is a retail on sale liquor license with Sunday sales. There's some several renewals here. Would you like me to read those for you?
I think they do have to be written to record.
At the Country Store at Three Forks, Diamond Spur Events LLC, Gaslight, Mexico To Pico, Pine Haven Venue and Lodging, Powderhouse Lodge and Restaurant, Rimrock Cappy Tavern, Silver Dollar Saloon, and the Peak Grill and Tap Room. There is a note that there was a violation on Pine Haven. I did talk to Brittany about that, and it's nothing that would interfere with the renewal of the license.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the renewals of the retail on sale liquor with Sunday sales licenses and release, the license upon payment of appropriate property taxes for the following: Country Store at Three Forks, Diamond Spur Events LLC, Gaslight, Mexico To Pico, Pine Haven Venue and Lodging, Powderhouse Lodge and Restaurant, Rimrock Cappy Tavern, Silver Dollar Saloon, and the Peak Grill and Tap Room.
Second.
Moved by Roskinect, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. So on the second one, Cindy, I think the motion maker could read it.
Absolutely. So that's the renewal, the retail on off sale wine and cider licenses for the businesses listed.
There any discussion for proving that, for Cindy?
Mr. Chair, move to approve the renewals of the retail on off sale wine and cider licenses and release upon payment of appropriate property taxes for the following: BJ's Country Store, Highway 16, Black Forest Inn, Black Hills Reception and Rentals, Hart Ranch Camp and Resort, Hart Ranch Golf Course, High Country Guest Ranch, Larson's Crooked Creek Resort, Mexico To Pico, Mount Rushmore Kailway, Powderhouse Lodge and Restaurant, Reptile Gardens, Second Twisted Brewing Company, and Under Canvas Inc.
Second.
Moved by Roskinect, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. On the next item, I will be abstaining, because it is my employer, but this, go ahead.
This is the renewal of the retail on off sale wine and cider license for Corner Pantry Number Twenty-One.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move the renewal of retail on off sale wine and cider licenses presented and release upon payment of appropriate proper taxes for Country Pantry Number Twenty-One, MGOL Company.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries with one abstention from Mr. LaCroy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, that brings us up to items from Buildings, from the Building Committee, and I'll recognize Buildings Year round Director Davis Purcell.
Okay, hello again, Commissioners. Davis Purcell, Director of Buildings and Grounds. See if I can get this presentation pulled up. Okay, so this was brought to the last commission meeting. We are seeking action on this to move forward with AVI's proposal for the audio, audiovisual technology at Concourse, so I'll go through some items here. Again, this is for the new administration building. So you can see the total of what we're after here as far as AVI is concerned. We also have some additional cost that our IT department is going to incur, because they're going to take on some of the other rooms that we've removed from this to reduce the price on the front end. So you have your entry area, which is, or excuse me, you have your entry staff conference room at 204, and then you have the public waiting areas, which are 207, 208. These will have TVs with live feed, so that'll have audiovisual in those two areas. Obviously, 209 is the commission chamber, and the AV control room is 211. So this is the front conference room there. It'll have the live stream from the chambers. It's the shortest, quickest access to the chambers or teleconference capabilities for that purpose. This room will be utilized for department head meetings and committee meetings. And again, yeah, this is an existing conference room that we're not, it's already existing in the building currently, and we would have to have new audiovisual in that room, so that total for that is twenty-seven thousand. Public waiting areas, again, I went over these, 207 and 208. There'll be TVs in these areas with some audiovisual in there for public that just wants to come in and watch the meetings without going into the commission chambers. Commission chambers itself, here, Holly might be able to speak on this a little bit better than I can, if you want to go over some of the...
We're using the wrong presentation. We used the, we clicked on the version that was presented to you at the last commission meeting. This is the version of the presentation for today's purposes.
Okay, so I will start all over. AVI retail sales agreement is roughly two-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand. The IT department costs for a couple other rooms that we took out of AVI's agreement is roughly fourteen thousand, and so we're looking for action on the two-hundred-and-ninety-six-thousand, four-hundred-and-three dollars and twenty-five cents for everything AVI out at Concourse. So again, the rooms are all the same as what I presented before.
Mm-hmm.
These are the two rooms that IT will... Yeah, support, excuse me, I was looking through it. So this is roughly fourteen thousand dollars. This took a significant amount off of AVI's proposal, so we could drive that number down quite a bit. The multipurpose room, initially, when we presented with AVI, we were going to turn this into kind of an EOC conference room, but again, we don't really need that out there, as we still are going to have the one here, and emergency management is going to be located here. This is that entry staff conference room that I spoke about earlier. Public waiting areas, same as before. Commission chambers, if you want to go over some of the details, that'll be in this room.
Basically designed with the same technology that we currently have. The two pieces that I would call out that we will be doing that are just a little bit newer, upgraded, would be an upgraded timing system to allow for the members of the public to see their countdown that we currently do not have in here, and then to place individual monitors at the dais for board members to be able to see presentations in front of you instead of looking up at the screen. So really, that's the only two differences that we have designed into the new chambers out at Concourse.
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
So this is one of the discussions, Mr., our superintendent for the Buildings and Grounds, Davis Purcell and me have talked about. I asked him if it's a need or a want. At this point, Holly's right, there's only two differences from this. I also asked, why don't you just take the technology from here, put it over there, save us some money? Well, we already know, if you try to take technology from one area to another and think you're going to retrofit it, it's not going to happen. So I appreciate the conversation, and again, the way they tried to, Ms. Holly and Davis tried to make a difference by trying to lower some of those costs, which they did, and again, they took the needs and not just the wants of the commission and this building in those areas. So thank you for both of you guys' work.
This is just the current design of what the chambers will look like out at Concourse. The two screens you can see behind will be projectors. One will show the presentations, one will show if there's anybody participating electronically via Teams or Zooms or anything like that, but there is, will also be two ceiling mounted TVs in the back that aren't shown here for members of the audience that are sitting farther back. And just for visuals, so the board and everyone in the public can see, those individual monitors in front of the Commissioners will just be for viewing only, they will not be interactive, and will be controlled from the AV room. We will also still have a smart annotation podium out there that staff more than likely just planning would use when you're looking at planning items, if you need to circle a section line or make any notations on there. We do currently have that technology here, but then also the updated timer system, so the members of the public and the Commission can both see what the actual countdown is. EV rooms, just the heart of running that system. No changes there. And that's the summary. So today, the motion that we're requesting of the Board is to approve the retail sales agreement with AVI in the amount of 282,403 and 25 cents for the audio visual technology to be placed in the new administration building at 900 Concourse Drive. And further, we are asking for Davis, Director of Buildings and Grounds, Staff Spending Authority for additional 3% in contingency, and 8,472 and 10 cents for any unforeseen expenses that might occur when we're actually installing the technology out there.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
That'd be my motion.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Ross Connect.
Mr. Chair, I just want to...
Mr. Ross.
Point out something, the Building Committee did reach out to other companies to see if we could find another company that could do something similar, and there just really is nothing in Rapid City. Sound Pro evidently was purchased, and that would have been an alternative, so we did reach out to other companies looking for competitive bids, and the bid that we originally had from this outfit was downscaled substantially to get where we're at today, so thank you for your work on that, Davis and Holly.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to mention that we have worked with AVI for the last 10-plus years. They are currently our support for this facility and the room that we're in right now. They have been amazing, they're very responsive. Mark Hunt is actually here in the audience with us today, our AVI rep, so if the Board has any questions, feel free, we're more than happy to answer.
I, excuse me, one question, is that the monitors I see are going to be informational from what's on the screens, but could those be updated to computers at a later date? I'm sure the wiring would be set up to where you don't have to crawl underneath the desk to plug in your laptop or anything like that.
Mr. Chair, I think we're talking two different things.
Yes.
Those will strictly just be for viewing.
Yep.
Not upgraded for computer purposes.
But could they easily be at a later date? That's my kind of question, I mean...
The technology I think that you're asking about isn't really out there. It would be a special type of programming, and it is very expensive.
Okay.
To be able to make them interactive, I think, is what you might be asking.
Yeah.
But the Commissioners, I mean, you're going to be able to have your laptops there on the dais with you, and yes, we have moved all of the plugins and the power connections on top of the dais so that we're not crawling under anymore.
At least they have the ability for the laptops if they so choose.
Yes, that is absolutely built in, yes.
With ours eyesight's going, having the monitor up's good.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, your next one, Davis, the Genoa West River Mental Health Pharmacy update.
Yeah, just wanted to give the Commission an update on the pharmacy that was approved to go over in the Pivot Point Facility. So currently, it is a contract between Genoa and Ability Construction. Ability Construction, I believe, is in the local area, out of the local area. So what they're doing is, I believe I also attached a floor plan, if I'm not mistaken, for you guys to see, but you can see it's a pretty small area. The construction schedule there, they did predict that they were going to start at the end of October, but they're still pending permits from the city currently. They still are predicting completion in January of '25. The total project cost there is 128,486. Again, that is between Ability Construction and Genoa Pharmacy, not a cost to the county. We also, this is typical to what B&amp;G does on any sort of project, over $100,000 is we require a performance bond, basically stating that they're going to perform to their proposal, and to the contract also, that is an AIA. So we did have them fill those out, and I did review those before they had signed them, and then obviously, that lease between Pennington County and Genoa Pharmacy is set to commence in January or upon completion of the construction, and that is set at 1100, 1140 and 41 cents per month. So I'll stand for any questions on that.
Any questions for Davis? This is informational only.
Yep.
My only comment is, I think it's going to be a good addition to the campus over there because they're able to provide the meds right there, and so I think that's good. But no further discussions, all in favor, oh no, sorry, it's just, next we go to Item P, which is the Pennington County Jail Tower Project Addition Design and A&E Fees. I'll give you the floor, Mr. Davis.
Okay, so what we're looking at here is, I mean, I'm going to be honest, I was a little reluctant bringing this up in front of the Commission, not only this item, but also Item C for some direction, but the fact is, well, let me give you a little background here. The initial approval with BKV for their design fees was the construction of a single-story structure, okay? So with all the mechanical equipment on the roof. And that estimated construction cost was between 23 and 24 million. As we've worked through this project, and we've collaborated with, you know, SCULL, and we've seen the data from the jail, there's obviously a higher need than if we were just to build 148 beds now. We're going to be right back where we were, especially with construction taking roughly three years just for one story to be built. So they redirected their efforts toward developing a three-story jail, so that includes two housing floors along with a dedicated mechanical floor. So what they did is they shifted the money into the design development stage, which we have reached the end of now. So my recommendation is that we design the entire jail tower, and here's why. It's a lot of cost upfront, and I am fully aware that it's all pending a bond at the end of the day, and possible tax levy increase, and that is unfortunate for a lot of people to hear, but the cost of construction and the burden on taxpayers will only increase in time if we don't design it now. I think if we look at the jail data that has been presented or provided, we can say we could fill a floor up in five or six years from now, so if we're talking three to four years construction, we're right back to the drawing table to see if we can get another floor added, if we only build one. So the design efforts right now are a two-story jail with a mechanical floor, but if we design the entire jail now, we have those plans moving forward to add those floors, to regroup and get everyone back in the same project, and to bring it to the top of their priority list will be difficult in the future, not to mention, like I said before, all the inflationary costs associated with that. So I did bring some different numbers with me. This design fee that I'm asking for is for the entire jail tower, so it is four complete housing floors and a mechanical level. I do have other options if we want to explore those, but again, I was reluctant to bring this up here, knowing that a bond has not yet been secured, but again, this is where we are, and I'd like to open the discussion on it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
Davis, thanks for the presentation and stuff, and I'm just going to ask a straight-up question from the earlier presentation. There was potential partners in there. We already reached out to Fall River County, Custer County, City of Rapid City, to find out what they're even willing to stomach in any of this, because when we're talking about funding this, and I know this is just the design plan, but if we go forward with spending an extra $5,481,000 and it goes to, you know, vote, and the public votes it down, I mean, we're talking about a lot of money regardless of what we're doing here, and I understand it, and I think we all understand what the issue at hand is and whatnot, but I'm just kind of wondering where we're at with even reaching out to those other entities that were presented as potential partners to see where they can help us out.
I think I'd lean on the Sheriff to answer that question.
I kind of figured with him walking up.
Thank you, Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. And this whole process is, it's difficult to navigate, because I feel like there needs to be Commission buy-in and participation, so we haven't gone out and had, you know, any formal meetings with any other entities, because I don't feel like that would be appropriate. I have visited with the mayor about the possibility of bringing a request to the city, but I talked to the Commission at the last meeting about hopefully getting a couple of Commissioners set on a committee to work with Davis and I for those meetings. I have had a brief conversation, or two brief conversations, with the Sheriff in Fall River County about our intention to come down and meet with him and their Commission, but we haven't had any formal meetings because I felt like the Commission needed to have the information that's in front of you, that we presented today, before we set those meetings up, and that didn't feel appropriate that Davis and I had those meetings without your approval.
Any follow-up?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
Davis, on this, what I'm looking at is that tabulation that shows the total cost design, 168 million roughly, and so the design fees would be about 3% of that, if I did my math right, which isn't, and the construction industry isn't that kind of a percentage that people follow. Your design fees will be a certain percentage of the total project costs?
Yes, so as the construction costs go up, the design fee goes down. I do have a spreadsheet that I brought with me, I did not bring enough copies for every Commissioner, but it's actually, I do want to correct, it's a 4.5% design fee percentage on the full 168. We currently have already paid 1.782 million.
Okay.
So that's basically, if you're adding 1.782 and the 5.4 million, that's how you get to 4.5%.
So for the one-story, the design fee percentage would be 7.7, if I'm reading that right?
Correct.
And then when they say five-story, I think just for the audience, it's going to be four stories of jail cells and one story dedicated to the...
Mechanical level.
Energy plant.
Yep, correct. It's a five-story jail.
That'll be on the second floor.
Second floor.
Of a five-story building.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Davis.
Go ahead, you can go first, Lord.
Okay. The concept of this project is huge, and the impact is huge, and I think, to me, to have the plans you're looking at, I mean, it's quite considerable work when you look at, you're having to work with, I believe it's right around 13 different entities altogether to be able to get the electrical, the plumbing, the security, all that has to, these people all have to work together. And the plan, I think it's, to me, it's a good plan to plan for the four floors because you know it's going to happen. If it's not 10 years from now, it's going to be 20 years from now. But to have those plans in place and to be able to do that, I think, is smart thinking on our part. So, and as I said, it's tough. I mean, I look at these numbers, and I'm going, wow, and I'm sure the public's going to do the same thing just for design, but the amount of work that goes into getting all those groups together to make things run smoothly, and so things can be done in a timely manner, and all work together seamlessly, takes great coordination. And so I just wanted to express that, when I see these numbers and the public sees these numbers, it does take quite a bit of coordination to happen, and however this turns out, whether it's for the full thing, built out or not, the plans are still there, and we'll work together if we approve this.
Yeah, and if I could add one thing, even Option A, which is just a single housing level with the mechanical level above it, we are investing in so much infrastructure to eventually get the building to the total of five stories. So again, it's one more, I guess, pro you could say into designing the entire facility, because over time, those needs are going to be there. And unless something drastically changes, right? So with our inmate population, so that's where we're at.
Mr. Chair.
I think Davis next.
Thank you. So I've been here for a while, and again, I'll keep saying I thought the jail project was a great idea. We started at 23, the most I saw was like 41 million. I was on board with that because it was a need, we needed the infrastructure, the mezzanine, some other stuff. I'm told if you don't build those, then the other projects, it would be dumb to do that. I disagree. I run businesses, we have projects, we have things, but I'm not going to have someone design a project unless I know that, number one, I can afford a $7 million, well, at this point, it'd be 5,481,816 to add to that project, but I'll keep saying, how did we get here? Because now, one sheriff is telling us we only needed 28 to 41 million dollar project, we only needed one floor, and maybe he wasn't looking ahead far enough, and maybe he didn't want to spend as much, I have no idea what he was thinking, and now we have a new project that's going to cost us 7 million, 5 million more, 5.5 million more in cost, just to design it, and saying, well, we might not use that later on. What that tells me is you're sending a message to the public that you're going for it at 168 million when you say we're going to do the project. You're also telling them you're going to spend $7 million to do a jail project. That's not easy to swallow for most people, and then saying, well, we might use that later, but we might not, but at least we have the floors, and I'll tell you, and in the city to the county, you guys have changed so much. I don't know how much we paid BKV for all these projects. I've seen them change three or four times just on a jail, let alone other projects, and we're saying we're going to stick to this. I don't think we're going to for the future. I think things are going to come up in the next 20 years, and you've spent 7 million, and that project won't stay the same, because we'll have other issues, we'll have other areas that we missed. To say we need to do it all at once because it saves this much for the future, what about the people today? What about the people paying for all this? We keep forgetting, how much is the impact on the citizens that are paying for this? We get to make the decision. We've done this on many projects in the last 10 years. I've seen more projects in Pennington County than I've ever seen in the city in the, what, six years I've been there? The last four years have been very impactful for the citizens of Pennington County. Again, you're going to take a project that I thought was 23 to 41 million, up to 168 million now, in less than, what, three years? How'd that come about? I know you weren't here, you can't answer that, Mr. Davis, and I appreciate it, but I'd like to, I'd like to say again, and people are going to get mad about this, but the impact you're making, unless we get, I appreciate the grants, I appreciate other people helping you, I appreciate you looking to the future, none of that, I'm not trying to be mean about it, but I've also been in politics in this county for 10 years, and the jail needs to be done, but we're going to say, okay, 168 million dollar project, let's just design it, and then if we don't do it, let's just scale it back, after we paid 7 million dollars for it. we don't do it, let's just scale it back, after we paid 7 million dollars for a project. To me, if I was doing a building, and I did that, that'd take my budget so low, I couldn't even fathom it. So, I'm asking you, look at the budget when you're deciding this, look at the budget where we are today, and how much you're gonna impact that, let alone your budget, how many FTEs, and how much insurance, all those impacts of this huge project, and that's all I'm asking, because I don't think you have all the numbers. I think in three to four years, it's gonna be a lot more, if you move ahead on 168 million. And then, those citizens that still have been saying, quit increasing my property taxes, are gonna say, how'd we get here? Because they're already saying it now. In my job, personally, for me, I've been listening, and I don't wanna impact in a way that's gonna be more and more negative each year to pay for this project. Those are huge bond payments, huge. I believe in public safety, Brian, I truly do, but also, you also have a women's prison coming here, and plus, the impact you're adding is huge for our downtown district in this area, and it's huge for how many people you have deployed in Rapid City, and how many inmates you're gonna have in the middle of Rapid City housed, whether it be Marshall or not. You're looking at how much money, and I guess you're looking at it as a business, and that's your job description, and I appreciate that. But that's a lot of people that we want to house in Rapid City. Now, I can see if the growth is gonna be 300,000 and all that kinda stuff, we're talking 117,000 people here. And then, we also take some of the, and I know that, because of the compacts, some of the people from other areas, but how much are they gonna contribute, we don't know yet. The only reason why I'd vote for this is I knew that we had more money coming in, and you don't know that, so why would we vote on this project today, and I can't, myself, until I know those impacts of how much money you're gonna bring in from other entities? And yes, I'm on your committee now, thank you, to figure that out, but I'm not willing to vote on this project at 7 million right now, today.
Okay. You guys wanna respond to, I lost track of the questions.
If I could, just a couple of points of clarification. So, I-
It's on your agenda.
The amount of money that this project, this potential project could cost is, you know, it's not lost on any of us, it's a big deal. This is, the process can be frustrating, but this is the process. Today, we're bringing a lot of information to you, so you have all the information that we had, that we've been working on for the last couple of years. It's a big project, and I'm not, we need to be able to work together to find a path forward that we're comfortable with, and we recognize that. But the cost of not doing this to our community is gonna far outweigh the cost that the project is gonna cost, in my opinion. And Commissioner Haddock, when you mentioned the previous sheriff with the dollar amounts compared to where we're at today, three years later, those are two different projects. When Sheriff Tome was here, when we were looking at this, was an infrastructure project. When I ran for sheriff two years ago, I was very open and honest and upfront about the fact that it's not the first thing that you wanna do when you're elected into office, is to try to build a new jail, but you've seen the data, we've been full for over 10 years now. So, this project, in my opinion, we're behind the curve on, so as we look at the data, to me, it doesn't personally make sense to build 148-bed jail that we know is gonna be full on the day that we're gonna open the doors on it. That's, when we're looking at today's costs on that, it's more money than the $37 million that we have in the bank today. So, to build 148 beds, we're still gonna need to look at a bond issue, and then when we open the doors up, the thing is gonna be full, and we're gonna have to try to figure out financially how we dig ourselves out of that hole in the future. So, today, we're just asking that you work with us to try to find a path forward on this, very complex, very expensive project, because if we do it wrong, we might save a little money, but the money that we're gonna cost our children and our grandchildren is exponential, and I think that, as you look through the data, you're gonna see that also.
Chair, can I respond to that?
Sure.
Very good. So, Brian, number one, I think if you ran and told everybody you were gonna do 168 million dollar project, they probably would've freaked on it. Number two, the impact from your data is not those numbers, unless the population increases to a certain amount, and that number isn't very much right now, it's 4,000. So, are you thinking, in the future, that we're gonna get hundreds of thousands of people here? Because if you look to comparables through the state, which I have, to what we have here, and I keep hearing the numbers are going down, from the police chief and the sheriff's department said, I thought crime was going down more, so maybe I was wrong, but the data from Elevate is a little bit different. So, how are we basing the data in order to move forward? Because the data I'm reading, to be fair, is about 150 to every seven to 10 years. So, you have 20 years, you have 500. So, I just read your data, that's where I got it from, so I'm trying to be fair about it, but I'm also, and you know I look up my information, I also met with Mr. Purcell for a few hours, and looked at some of the state, and what they have, and how they do their stuff. So, I'm listening to what you're saying and some of it, but the data's not showing exactly what you're putting and what you wanna design for the future. So, maybe I'm wrong, but I just read some of the stuff that you guys had put down.
If I could respond to that. I think the data clearly shows that we need to add this capacity, and whether we need to, on the front end, build the whole project out, or scale it down and shell it in, I think the data clearly shows we need to finish at least two floors of this, on the front end of it. And the data, on the increase in our jail population is factual up until 2025, moving forward, and then there's assumptions made, obviously, on that. Part of the increase, part of the increase in the future is us bringing US Marshals back to help offset the operational costs of the jail. We did the study, Casey Peterson came in and did the study, probably been 10 years ago now, with Sheriff Tome, and it showed that we could reduce a great percentage of work that we had, and reduce some of our jail population, but it's still gonna increase the taxes that Pennington County's gonna pay for the same services. So, I'm trying to be able to do this, to stage this in a way that we can keep some of those paying customers here to offset our costs. If we don't do that, we're gonna be stuck in the near future with no extra revenue coming in, and we're still gonna need to do this project. And it might not be me, and it might not be any of you, but somebody in the near future is gonna need to do this project. The cost is gonna be much higher, and what we're gonna have to go through as a community to decide which inmates we need to release back out in the community, because we're out of room, that's gonna be the true cost, in my opinion.
My comment on that is, thank you, Brian and Davis, for bringing this forward. I think you guys brought a lot of information, went very much in detail. I just wanna give a little bit of history from what I know. I remember, I don't remember the years, because I didn't look it up, but I remember when we had the annex out in the parking lot of the courthouse, to be able to house inmates, because things started filling up, and that was the option that they did. I can remember when the tower was first built, and it didn't take long to fill up. It's not a point, I hate to see our community, our community wants public safety number one, and we are gonna get opposition, and I believe, as Deb says, beaverfold, it's a big number, but I think public safety's number one, and we have to be able to communicate to the community, is this what you want, this is how we get there. I think the jail, the sheriff's department has worked very hard, and the court systems, the state's attorney's office, to work through the systems to get to low levels, and I think we've reached our max. Sometimes people, the court systems don't, you know, for other reasons, said, probably don't sentence people to more time, but I think you've made it very clear that structure needs to be put in place, and there needs to be consequences for actions that are out there, and I think that's what the community wants. And I think that's also a big part for people that do get into jail, is it's organized, a structured environment, and they learn from that, and you put in programs that help them to become better when they get out, but sometimes that option of having them be there, that structured environment, needs to happen, and I think we're headed down that way. But as I said, you know, the history shows that, you know, we've done the annex way back when, to fix the overflow problem. And if we don't plan for the future, Brian, I think you said it absolutely, it's going to, we're gonna push it onto somebody else, you know? We see the numbers, we see the trends, and I think that's what we have to do, and I agree with Devin, with change orders when things happen, absolutely, I'm working on a project right now, I can't tell you how many times that's been changed. We had a master plan, but I can tell you that all the engineering for the plumbing, the structures, the wiring, all that stuff is leased in place, and when a person comes in, it's an easy change. It's not something that's gonna cost you even more to change, because you gotta have a plan for that. So, I think the plan to do the full build, I think it's a good plan and a smart plan. I think it's gonna, it'll be there for, if we don't do all of it, or just do that one floor, we have that in place to where the other commissioners can come in and say, okay, we can work with this and move forward, and it's gonna be less expensive at that point in time.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Laster.
So, I have a question, and maybe I've missed something in all of this. This is a $5 million ask for engineering, development, whatever, whatever the term is, design package. Was this in our 2025 budget that we recently passed? If not, where are we getting the money from?
No, this is coming straight out of our available bond money.
So, this is coming out of that $37 million?
Correct. I do have a sheet that I printed for all the commissioners, if you wanna see the budget breakdown with or if this is passed, and you can see the current available bond money on there. Would you like that?
I would.
Okay.
That's my question at this moment.
Mr. Ross. Mr. Chair, you know, I know this is an emotional situation. I know that we're trying to address any tax burden to the taxpayers, but the bottom line is that the state statute says that county must provide adequate jail space, and that the county board is responsible for that jail operation administration. I think we all agree that crime is on the increase in the area in general, I think we all agree that there's a need for more jail space, and I think we all agree that the cost tomorrow is gonna be higher than the cost today, so we can't keep kicking this can down the road, in my opinion, we have to make a stand and get this thing going. And hopefully, the decision that we make, in the long run, is gonna be beneficial to the taxpayers, because one way or another, we can't just ignore it. We can't leave today and just assume that this is gonna go away. It's here today, and we're trying to, to me, we're trying to find the right footing to go forward. Brian, my question to you is, we talk about a remote location. I think there's a number of reasons we've considered remote locations, but relative to the cost and operating that facility, if we could find land, and I've never seen any prison or jail go anywhere where there wasn't extreme opposition, including the women's prison, including the one out in Creek Drive, so maybe you could explain why we chose, not only for efficiency, but we think this is the best location.
Chairman.
Good, Brian.
And that was covered on a previous slide, and yes, we explored all those options. I believe personally, it would've been cheaper to go build off-site, a one-level floor, like similar to what they did at the women's prison. Operationally, our costs would increase pretty significantly. We've adequately sized the kitchen and laundry to handle that here locally, we can incrementally add administration and support staff here without having to completely reduplicate services off-site, so there's some operational costs, savings to do it locally, but we knew, probably one of the most expensive ways to do this jail was to build it vertical on a current location, because of the site restrictions that we have down here. But frankly, every other option over two years that Sheriff Tome and I looked at, failed. Either the city wasn't comfortable that it was gonna go into the right location, or we couldn't get the right land bought, and there were, like I said earlier, there were very few options at the time for, that the city was gonna have any interest in allowing us to pursue, and it fit best right here on this location for those purposes.
Thank you for that.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lewis.
So, typically, government is reactionary to conditions that are going on, and part of this is reactionary, part of it is planning for the future, and I like the planning for the future. But I don't think there's any doubt that if something needs to be done in the near future, to basically bring us current, because we're behind the times right now, and have been. And so, I believe that what the building committee has gone through, and the process that you've all taken here, has been very positive as far as what we should be doing. Yeah, the big challenge is, where does the dollars come from in order to accomplish that? And I appreciate Tom Grimmon being here today, and presenting to us a very accurate picture of what it would take and what it would cost. So, I support totally what you're trying to do, I like the idea of planning for the future, and I think it would be, in my mind, I think it would be really ridiculous in nature to build for today's need, and not build for the next 10, 15 years.
Chair.
Ms. Haddock.
Thank you. I appreciate, again, that we need a jail, I'll keep saying it over and over again, but your data's not showing the need for this big a jail. It's not emotionary, it's not reactionary, I actually read the data, and I went through it with Mr. Purcell. I also, if you read, I was reading this, that it's supposed to, the Elevate says we're gonna increase from 2020 to 2024, is 1.4%, the population will increase in 29 to 121,000. So, the 4,000 people coming in are from the Elswood, so the increase is gonna be, in the next few years, from military people, so we're saying they're gonna cause us to need more beds? I mean, if that's the increase, and that's the data, is the 4,000 people are military, we also have to remember, and if you listen to the Colonel there, he said, they're probably gonna lose a couple thousand, when they gained 4,000, if I'm correct. So, where's the increase? I'll keep saying it, it's not emotionary or reactionary from the public, in one sense, we also, as commissioners, are impacted by property taxes. So, to think it's emotionary or reactionary, I just read the data. I get the data from the prison, I get it from people, I listen to our building superintendent, I listen to Elevate, and I put all that together with facts, because before, it was 20 to 40,000 people were coming here, and now it's 4,000, I think we've increased, what, 6,000? Plus, again, let's look at the population growth in Rapid City. Everybody looked at the population growth in Rapid City, how much has it grown over the years? In five years? Where are all the prisoners coming from? Because your prisoner totals aren't matching your data, it's not matching the growth, and all those numbers make an impact on my decision. So, again, we need a jail, we've got that bottom line down, how much do we need? How much do we want? We want the future, and have a bunch of extra room, I get it, but we also have a need to listen to the people that have to pay for it, that's our job. So, I don't base my stuff on emotion, because I'd be in trouble, I wouldn't have a business by now if that was the deal, take my word for it, by having weekly motels. It's based on how many numbers, what's the growth, what was the last impact in my last, what, three to five years, in my- three to five years in my business? And then those numbers all come together about what I look for, for the future. So same with this. And again, I appreciate that you want to look out, but we've been doing that for four years. We've been looking at for the, for the wage increase. We looked at it for the buildings increase by two. And who's all paying for it? That's not emotional. That's listening to the people that have to pay for it, and that's our job. So if we think we can run the numbers and, and do whatever, then change these numbers. Change this packet to, that, that I have an understanding of 168 million dollar project with a 7 million or 5,481,816 increase. So again, think I'm against the jail. It's not, and, and I've said it from the beginning. And now we're going to use 5 million of the other money to pay for, or 5,481,0816 to pay for this and bring that down, that total even down more. So asking for a bond that was initially, and we know that, was for the jail. Did you know initially, most of that money was made for the jail? The changes, I get the change orders. You're right, Lloyd, Commissioner McCray, I get the changes. But what you went to the most at maybe 41, maybe 51, if I, if I look at all the changes to 168, that's quite an impact to swallow and try to have the, and my job is to talk to the taxpayers or their people, I don't know, people in general. You only have 38, 39,000, do you know that, property owners? That's a huge impact for them to suck up. And then just the general public, that inflation area, and you can say that doesn't matter, that's emotional. But it's a huge burden because it's not just those people out there, it's our employees. So.
If I could make just a couple of points of clarification?
Go ahead.
This is great conversation. This is why we're bringing this forward. I mean, this co, this conversation needs to happen. That nothing, I'm not offended by this conversation. I'm not emotional by it. We're providing data and we have to work together to find a path forward. Just a couple of points of clarification, though. When I, when I show you this data here, when you look at 2000, well, from 2004 to 2024, that's actual data. There, there's, there's nothing in there based on population. That's actual data. That's what our jail numbers have done. When you look at 2020, 2021, 2022, 2023, 2024, and you see that trend line going like this, that's not numbers that I'm making up or projecting or putting Elevate's numbers in. That's what our jail population has done. When you see the yellow line those years go down, 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 that's what we've had to do to keep people, to keep our jail from being overfull, from keeping lawsuits from happening to Pennington County, to keep our staff safe and to keep our inmates safe. When you see that trend line go out into the future, I actually bent it down based on data. You see that trend line flattens out a little bit moving into 2025. I'm not sure that that's going to happen. That's not within my control. When we talk about, just so, just so it doesn't come across that I'm providing conflicting information, and we talk about, I just did a press release yesterday saying our violent crime statistics in Pennington County dropped from the same quarter last year to this year. But I would tell you, that's because we are keeping room at the jail. When I talk to our law enforcement partners, partners that utilize our jail, I tell them, if somebody needs to be arrested, I don't want your officers on the street worrying about whether they have jail bed space or not to bring them to. When I talk to State's Attorney Retsel, I tell her, you prosecute cases like you need to do to keep our community safe, and you let me worry about the jail bed space. When I talk to the, the judges in our circuit, I ask them to do what they think is best for the community, not to be making release decisions or sentencing decisions based on our jail bed space. Those factors together is the reason that our crime rate has dropped, I believe, over the last two to three years because we've taken that approach. But it's come at a cost to Pennington County. It's going to cost Pennington County $2 million this year because I've had to kick out that number of US Marshal inmates to make room for our local population. That's the only option that I have moving forward. And I did not factor any growth population into this. This, that trend line that you see on there, on the Pennington County inmate population, is 100% based on real data from the last 20 years. And we could look at that and we could talk, we could talk about factors. The State's Attorney's Office could come up with a great program. The Public Defender's Office could change their philosophy. The judges could change their sentencing. The legislature could pass new sentencing guidelines that could impact that number. We can talk about what that, what that number is and whether you think it's accurate or not. Part of the increase in that number is me trying to bring the marshal inmates back. We could flatten that back out to zero, and we could probably get another five, six, seven years without needing to do anything. But Pennington County taxpayers are still going to pay the bill, whether we build this thing or we don't build this thing.
Thank you, Brian.
That's my opinion.
Mr. Chair.
Just a second. I'd move to approve Davis Purcell Buildings and Ground Director authorization to sign the AIG 802 amendment to the AIA 133-2019 contract with BKV Group for additional services totaling 5,481,816 to provide a complete design package for the jail tower project, which encompasses the four housing floors and mechanical floor, vehicle, alley, port, and renovations with the existing jail. That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And for discussion, Mr. Brown was next in the queue.
I guess all I was going to say is that I appreciate the presentation today. It explained to me where we're at, explains to me where we need to go in the future. My final statement is how do you put a cost on public safety?
Mr. Lester.
Well, I was going to ask another question before the motion was going on there. So my, my question is this, because I started thinking through and I calculated back on the jail data when, you know, we're talking about it. 14 years, if you count back 14 years, that's 2009 till 2023. I took that. We had a roughly 200, well, actually, we had, from 2009, we had 400 bed capacity, and we went up to 600 bed capacity. So 200 level increase. And then in 14 years, we filled that. So 14 years, I factored out, that puts us at 2039. If we did a 300 bed increase, which is, that's why I've been kind of looking at option B. So if we went with option B, my question was going to be, what would that design cost be instead of being for the whole thing? So I was going to ask that question before the motion was made because, you know, that might have changed the minds in there, the conversation. But I'd, I'd want to know what that is because I think 300 is reasonable, at least over the next 14 years, based on the trending data that we see. Sure, there's some data that's, that's, that's guesswork. I mean, all of us in our businesses or our nonprofits or everything that we work in, we always have guesswork and we estimate. And then hopefully, we're, we're underneath our estimated expenditures and we hope we're, we underestimate our revenue so that we have more revenue than what we expected. So do you have that data point there, Davis, for the, for option B, the engineering design package cost?
Yep. Just give me one second here.
Because I'll be honest, I'm more interested in that option and what that cost would be than the overall. And I get it, Sheriff. The public wants public safety. They also want us to be very cautious of our tax dollars. That means this board moving forward in the future is really going to have to look at what the county is actually spending money on and probably even cutting overall budgets to make this work so that we're not constantly relying on the backs of the taxpayers who, who have to make a decision between owning my property and paying an extra 100 or 188 dollars a year in taxes, along with whatever school does, along with whatever my insurance does, my meds, all that kind of stuff. So go ahead, Davis. I'm sorry.
Okay. So the design fee for option B, including alternates one and two, is an additional
And that's with alternates one and alternates two?
Correct.
Mr. Chair, my, I don't know if I could, I can't make a motion, can I?
Chair.
No, hold on. Now you can.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a substit, I would, substitute motion that we would approve Davis Purcell Buildings and Grounds Director authorization to sign the AIG 802 amending the AIA 133 2019 contract with BKV Group. Additional services totaling $3,839,022 to provide the complete design package for, for the jail tower project, which encompasses option B and alternates one and two.
Second for discussion.
Motion's been made and seconded for discussion.
We have some additional comments from my construction manager, Kevin.
Construction manager with Buildings and Grounds, I've been involved in the planning and design of the jail since I've been here in '21. We started with the infrastructure. Just a little history on, on the jail system. We started becoming a little overcrowded in the eighties. We moved an annex out into the court parking lot. They built the main jail and completed it in '89. It had shelled in floors. It lasted for around 20 years before it started becoming to beyond our operational efficiency. So it was originally designed as a four housing floor unit, and the top floor was removed because of cost considerations. Well, the cost to add that fourth floor to the main jail ended up being more expensive than building the annex. So they built the annex, they shelled in certain floors in the annex, which filled up from 26, 2006 till today, or recently in the future. So following that trend, we may not have had the, the inmates to put in that space at the time, but it was designed to have that future growth. And we, no matter what the population did, the growth and the amount of inmates we were putting in the jail considered, is consistent with the data that the sheriff had provided. It just continues to, to be there. The second point I wanted to make is the, the fees that we have today were based on our design partners at a 50% DD, design development stage. We now have 100% design development, which will narrow down the numbers some, allow them to look at some of the additional design that's there. There may be a savings of several million dollars that will reduce design fee costs on a total jail package as well. You have to build in certain amounts of contingency, both design and construction contingency, in a very early preliminary design process. So now that we just got 100% DDs last Friday, it may be a recommendation to table the discussion for another meeting, so, or two, so that we can come back with some other numbers that are showing that estimate and/or the change in cost from where we are today to what that extra 50% of design development might have got us. That's a suggestion, an option to, to talk about and think about. Either way, I think that shelling in a forced housing unit jail is smart. It follows the trend of what the county's done every time. And the data shows that every time we did that, we built out the original towers and the original space at a lesser cost to the, to the community. So that's just my.
Thanks, Kevin.
Little history.
Deb, you have the floor.
Thank you. I appreciate the substitute motion, but I also appreciate what Kevin just said. I think people need more information before you decide on a $7 million project. There's no hurry. It's in the next three months, the design project's not going up. The next six months, the design project's not going up. You also will get a feel from the people that it's not emotional for them, what it means to increase this to where it's at. And maybe you would also find more buy-in at that time for the project, which would be easier for us to move forward on. Bottom line is, option A, B, C, D, E, F, whatever it is, I think it needs to have more discussion. So at this point, to just approve a $7 million project, I don't think is fiscally responsible. I think it needs more information and more data. And I think when we provide that out to the public so it makes more sense, it will make sense to, if, if that's the bottom line, to approve a $7 million design project. So again, what's the hurry today? I'm with Kevin. What is the hurry for that project to be done right now? And again, we've had many change orders, as, as Mr. McCray and I've said, in that area, maybe there'll be some changes to some of the numbers. Maybe we have more buy-in from the different counties and the city. And then I think it, it'd be easier for people to move forward with us making a positive decision of where we need to go. So today, on all the options, I'm not ready to vote. I don't think it's been in the public. It's been in the paper, what, a week ago or so? I don't think that's fair to the public to just approve it today based on, might cost us more later when we've got a few months to figure out in the bottom line what's going to happen.
Thank you. I'll just clarify for a moment that the item that's on the agenda is for the design. We're not approving the project, but having a design plan for the master project, master buildup. That's what this one's for. I just wanted to clarify that. I do thank Kevin for that. And I, I believe that's a, a good route to go if we, if that motion comes up, Mr. Davis.
That's what I was going to say.
So we have a substitute motion on the floor for our item B, but I would probably recommend another substitute motion to continue.
That'd be my motion.
Continue to win.
How long would it take you, Kevin?
If I could add one more thing. The reason we're, we're coming up here asking for these additional design fees, because like I had said in the beginning, they reallocated their current fees. That was based off a single story structure to what you're seeing on the screen now, which is two housing levels and a mechanical level, because we think this best fits the immediate needs by the time it's constructed. So currently, all of our design team is done working on this project unless we approve of something. What that something is, we can sit here and work it out, or we can bring it back to the next commission meeting, but we don't want to stall it too far. Otherwise, they're going to have to find time, or they're going to have, they'll, they'll have their people on other projects doing other things, and this will fall on the, the back end of things. Because again, we have so much buy into this project right now with all of our design team, our engineers, our design assist partners, that if we don't continue with something, it will fall through the cracks. So we do need a decision at some point on, on design.
So a follow-up, if I can get a second?
Second.
Okay. So again, what's the hurry? Even if it's two weeks, four weeks? I mean, you have the design done, Mr. Purcell. If you have to redo the design, I mean, you have all the options, you have all the things you need for us to make a decision. I'm saying, gather the data, bring Kevin's stuff forward, make sure you have the full information. And then I also will get Brian in between there. So we have a full discussion on some of this instead of upfront. I like to have upfront, but I also, once I say something, I'd like to have a frank discussion as well. But I think the continuance is something positive, not only for this commission, it's for the public to understand some of it. And then the data coming back will be in full and a little bit different, I think, from Kevin's presentation and, and just discussion of what the public wants to see for the future here to move forward.
Good. So we do.
Can I respond to that real quick? So I agree. I, I do think there needs to be more public outreach. But I also think, it also goes into the next item on the agenda is some direction from the commission on two options rather than four. So we're bringing the, the public something, and we don't have to eliminate the other options. We can still show the costs of all four options and all that to be transparent. But we, we want to make sure we have confidence in what we're presenting forward. And right now, there's just a lot of unknowns, especially for the design team, for Buildings and Grounds, for the sheriff's office moving forward. And the fact is, yeah, we have DDs done, not CDs. So we have no funds to move forward with anything. And if we want to get better, more accurate numbers for this project, the more we can refine our design in the construction documents, the better estimates we can get from SCUL and potentially drive some of these costs down.
So you're saying it could cost more because all the design isn't done? Because you just said, if, just in case, Mr. Purcell, that we get all the design costs in there in case basically we're missing anything, I would say, if you have it designed, in there in case, basically, we're missing anything, I would say, if you have it designed, you have the options, you have everything that you have on the data, it's not going to change, and it shouldn't change that much. And what are we going to change when it comes back? I guess that's what I'm looking at. You have a project that's designed in different options with different amounts. What's going to change in a week, or two weeks, or a month, or two months? What's going to change? Because you already have all your options. And number two, on the next agenda, can be continued with it to make sure we're all on the same page and that we have the data that's correct.
Yeah, and so the, we don't foresee any of these costs increasing with construction documents. What happens when you estimate projects in schematic design or development design D Ds, you get a lot of unknown. So there's a ton of contingency to inflate these costs because of the unknowns. The more we can refine these into construction documents, the more we can lower those contingencies as well as refine all of the costs across the board. So by moving a design process forward, you get more accurate estimations. So there's, these are very, they're not very inflated, that's not what I'm saying, but there's a lot of contingency built into these because we don't have the construction documents yet.
What you're saying is they're guesstimates, and that's that's not.
They're very market value guesstimates to what SCULL, who is the C M A R on this project, and they can tell you what the market value of constructability in this location. And I can tell you, we have pages and pages of broken down line items by line items that I'd be more than willing to share. To go through each one of those is extensive, but I can tell you that they are very, very accurate estimations. However, you can refine things more as you move through construction document phases to to refine the numbers. I'm not saying they're going to change by millions or even thousands, but they potentially could.
How's that going to change in the next two weeks, the next month, or anything else?
The problem is if we stall the design now, they will have to find work elsewhere, and they'll have other projects. Right now, they're completely committed to this project. No matter what we do, they're picking up the phone and they're working on this continuously. And what happens is with the design, with an architecture firm, design firm, they have to fill their time with other projects.
Mr. Davis, you said this is refined. You gave us options to move forward with and that how much those costs were. Now you're saying some of that is guesstimate, and some of that needs to still be redesigned or redone. So what you're telling me, that you're, I'm sorry, I feel like you're contradicting that. You're saying it might, it's a guesstimate, but we're ready to go, but we might have to refine it, but those estimates might not be, and those contingencies might not be where they need to be right now. I mean, how's that going to change from B K V's point of view? That's only going to change for ours. And again, that just tells me, again, there needs to be more discussion.
Okay.
One more thing, it's it's not a guesstimate. I said estimate, it's a proposal, and it's a very high-level proposal. And SCULL has gone through, like I said, every single detail of this project and broke every single line item down for us. So it is not just a number we're throwing up on a screen. I am saying there is potential that it could change, yes, but we're also not committing to a bond payment today. We're not committing to any of that. We're not even committing to say that we're going to build the entire thing. We're saying, we know we at least need option B, which is what you see on the screen, to by the time it's constructed, that'll get us at least a little bit of breathing room. And anything beyond that, that we can get, if we can get the other two floors shelled in, that's great. But today, we're sitting with a very high-level estimate, as you see here. But again, when you have construction documents, you're only refining those. It's not, they're not going to have to reevaluate every single piece to say, oh, we inflated those costs too much. And there's a ton of contingency built in, and that'll decrease over time.
But you're contradicting. You just said that it wouldn't, if you evaluated, nothing's going to change. So what's the problem with the continuance to find out the numbers and the stuff that we need to know moving forward that we just talked about? So I guess, I don't know why.
Did I say nothing was going to, I don't think I said nothing will change.
Okay, I, this is a continuation motion, so I'm going to go for a roll call vote on the continuation motion.
Mr. Chair, what's a, did you want to continue this?
Excuse me? It would be.
Can we roll that second item as continued discussion as well, the item C?
Has to take it separate.
Have to do it separate, okay.
So that, for item B, there is a motion on the floor to continue to the next commission meeting. And then there is a substitute motion after that one to design item A, and then the original motion was the original request.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, for clarification.
That's what I'm trying to do. Go ahead.
What did you say about item A?
Option B.
I think it was option B, not A.
Did I say B, A?
Said A, that's why I was like, wait a minute.
Okay, yeah, the second motion, if if the continues doesn't pass, there was a motion for item, to design fee for item B, or option B. And then if that one doesn't pass, there's the original one, which is the complete design fees for the project.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I'll support the original motion, and I will not be here at the next meeting, so I just wanted to point that out.
Okay. So we need a roll call vote on the continuation motion.
Drews.
No.
Patcock.
Aye.
Lassiter.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
LaCroy.
No. So now that brings us up to the other substitute motion that was for option B design, and we'll do a roll call vote on that.
No.
Patcock.
No.
Lassiter.
Aye.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
LaCroy.
No. Now we're back to the original motion, which was to approve Davis, Purcell, Buildings and Grounds Director to authorize signed A I amendment one eight thirty-three twenty-nineteen contract to B K V Group for additional services of five million four eighty-one eight sixteen, and to provide a complete design package for the jail tower project, which encompasses housing floors, mechanical floor, vehicles, alley port, and renovations of his existing jail. Roll call, please.
Drews.
Aye.
Patcock.
No.
Lassiter.
No.
Ross Connect.
Aye. Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye. That brings us up to item C, which is direction for request for the jail tower project, long-term investment. Mr. Purcell.
Okay, give me one second here. So this is just a continued discussion of kind of what we've been talking about this entire time, as I've been standing up here. Again, this is narrowing down the options to two for our focus to be on. So my recommendation is option C one and C two, and the reasons why, I think I've explained over the last half an hour or so, we, it makes a lot of sense, and I'm going to kind of piggyback what Kevin said. As far as at least option C one gets us those shelled-in floors that allow us for future expansion. Because again, I'm not saying option B isn't a great option. The problem is the cost to build on top of this at a later time is going to be substantial, just like Kevin had said. Just to put another floor on top of the existing jail, the original jail, it was cheaper to build an annex at that point, excuse me, and shell those floors in. So the county, you know, has a pass of of shelling in floors for later expansion, and so really, what I'm looking for here is direction. I'm giving my recommendation of C one and C two, because again, I think if you're investing in the amount of infrastructure that we're investing in for any option, it makes sense to at least shell it in, the additional two floors. And I'll stand for any more questions or discussions on that.
Mr. Ross Connect.
So in layman's terms, option B would be involve demo at some point. So basically, you're going backwards before you can even go forwards. Is that?
Yeah, correct. And you're also, you're, what you're doing is, you're demoing a a roof, an exterior roof that is over an occupied inmate space, which is a lot, there's a lot of security concerns there as well. And it just does not make a lot of sense.
I can add, Kevin Burton, construction manager. The other item that's going to happen in item B, in order to be able to build up in the future, you need to extend all your structural members above the roof, and that all needs weather protection. So you need to protect all that weather protection for, which adds cost for weather protecting all of the structural members to build up on top of it. So, yes, to, you have to tear all of that off and redo all of that before you can add the third and fourth floor of housing units on top of that three-story building.
Okay, Mr. Ross Connect.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I've moved to direct buildings and grounds and advancing option C one and C two as the two preferred concepts for continued planning in the jail tower project, emphasizing long-term infrastructure, public safety, and financial sustainability.
Move by Drews.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ross Connect.
Chair.
Discussion, Mr. Patcock.
So it shows me that you're moving forward anyway. Number two, fiscally responsible, we've had a three to two vote for the last four years, I'll just tell you, it's been a pattern. Same people moving fiscally responsible issues to millions of dollars for the taxpayers, and and they're calling it emotional or reactionary. I think the impact of what this doing and what you're doing today, the project supposedly isn't moving forward, this is just the design. I have a hard time thinking this would pass in the future from the spending we pay, we have put in the past from a three to two vote. Thank you.
Personally, I, I want to thank the staff for all the hard work they've done on this. I think this is futuristic outlook, and this plan could change at any time. So I don't think we're doing a preapproval of anything yet. In order to do an ask, you have to have some guidance, and this is given the guidance what we prefer to have, and things could change in the future. So though, I will be supporting the motion on the floor. Any further discussion? The roll call vote.
My last statement, this isn't the most expensive option, and it's not the cheapest option. It's probably the the middle of the road and the, probably in the long run, the most cost affection, effective option, if I understand it.
Yes, option C one would be the most cost-effective if the end goal is to have a five-story, but four-story built-out, you know, jail housing levels. C one will minimize the need, obviously, for costly future additions, as well as avoid a lot of those inflationary costs on the front end when you're dealing with construction and that. What it allows us to do is essentially build those, shell those floors in, and all we're doing is adding cells and lighting and the plumbing and the mechanical, and it's all right there, ready for us, so.
And there, I think there was one option, and that option would have, to me, would have been based on the assumption that at some point in time, crime's going to level off, which I don't see happening.
Okay, any further comments from the commission? Any from the public? Seeing none, I'd go to a roll call vote, please.
Drews.
Aye.
Patcock.
Nope.
Lassiter.
Nope.
Ross Connect.
Aye.
LaCroy.
Aye. Motion carries. Brings us up to item number eleven, Davis. Which is the courthouse security project access control.
Okay, I am going to sort of present some of the technical aspects of this additional security that we're requesting at the courthouse at this time. And then I will have some people from the courthouse security committee meeting come up and and talk about some of the details and why we're looking into this. So what we're looking at doing is 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 adding an additional sixty-three card access doors in the courthouse. Keep in mind, forty-one of those doors are courtroom doors that are in the courtrooms that lead directly back into either judges' offices or back employee hallways and things like that. There's also stairwells that they transport inmates to and from, and those right now have to be, the deputies have to fumble around with a bunch of keys just to get in and out of those doors. So we had forty-one courtroom doors. Obviously, there's two elevators involved there to limit some access on some of the floors if needed. Common areas, you have about twelve doors, those are just sort of in your public corridors that go back into employee hallways. And then you have about eight entrance and egress doors, and we did walk the fire department through this plan a long time ago to go over it in detail and make sure we weren't breaking any codes or anything like that for egress. So why we're looking at it now is there's a opportunity to apply for funding through the Unified Judicial Systems Court Security Grant, and it will pay seventy-five percent of the total expenses, or reimburse, excuse me. The total that we're looking at for this project is four hundred and eight thousand eight hundred and forty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. So the total cost to Pennington County in the end, to add these additional sixty-three doors, is a hundred and two thousand two hundred and ten dollars and forty-seven cents. If you're just looking at this from a perspective of, I've had, I've been in a lot of buildings that have had access control added to them, or retrofitted systems, things like that, this is a significant cost, no doubt, on the front end, but if you have that seventy-five percent reimbursement, a hundred and two thousand dollars to really upgrade the security there at the courthouse, I think is paramount. Another thing that we are exploring is adding a notification and panic alert system at some point. We are actually working through those details as quickly as possible. We were actually, we were going to bring the project all up at once, but I kind of wanted to gauge the temperature of the commission on this to see if we should continue moving forward with this. And if so, we might just amend convergence initial contract and come back for an additional amount. But anything that's added to the top of this, again, just remember, seventy-five percent of it is reimbursed back to the county. We will be, we are looking at utilizing the accumulated building fund to pay for the cost upfront. And if the total, the estimated available funds as of the end of September is about one point two, one point three million in that ballpark, and at the end of the day, again, I just want to reiterate, it'll be a hundred and two thousand dollar impact to that total. Once reimbursed, we do have to pay for it all upfront, once it's finished, and then we submit that in the grant process, and we get reimbursed that way.
Thanks. Any questions for Davis?
Mr. Chair, the building committee, the question was asked, how long that reimbursement might take?
It's pretty quick. I believe it's, once you get it, well, and what, what we have to do, what we have to do is, we will have to, once we get, if we get this approved, we will submit it, and then they will approve it, like pre-approve it, saying, yes, we will cover the seventy-five percent of those costs. Any additional details you'd like to share?
Yeah, their process is pretty quick.
Just identify yourself again for that.
Oh, Jennifer Williams, Carl Grant Manager. The process through U J S is pretty quick and easy as far as the application goes, and I've talked to Scott Shelton with U J S, and if we have like one, one thing that we want to get done, and we pay for that one thing, and then we do the next thing, there's a way that we can work with them to get reimbursement piece by piece. And then I'll work with Davis to make sure that the money goes back to the fund that we borrowed it from.
So that United Judicial Systems Court Security Grant Fund, that's not a infinite amount of money, there's only a certain amount of funds in that. So if we waited, I don't know if there's a timeline, but if we wait too long, we might not not have this opportunity.
Correct. We've been told that right now that there's plenty of funding, but we are making a rather large ask, and so it was kind of advised that asking sooner rather than later might be a good opportunity, because they have a set amount of money, and they've got some of it earmarked for different projects. But once that particular fund is out, they don't have necessarily infinite money to refill it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I might be able to shed just a little late on that. Originally, that was a, it's a five million dollar program that was set up by U J S, and they have now, and I think we were actually one of the pilot ones initially when they came in and and did their assessment of what our needs may be, and worked with us on this. And, but now, over fifty counties have received that assessment. And so, yeah, the money is not there forever type thing. The Chief Justice on Monday said at this time, there's sufficient money left in there for the projects that they're anticipating. But now, some are asking for second assessments, have done the first one, and are asking for a second assessment. So I think it's very important for us to to get on this. So I think it's very important for us to, to get on this now and, because we may have more needs also.
And thanks for finding the grant and working through it. So any further questions?
Real, real quick, I'll see if anyone else wants to share. If not, is, is anyone even, nope, they're not even here. Never mind. Okay.
So I'd look for a motion from the commission.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the update and expansion of the access control system at the Pennington County Courthouse as proposed by the courthouse security committee, including the installation of card access at 63 additional doors with a total project cost of $408,841.86. This project will be funded initially by the county using the accumulated building fund with the exception of the reimbursement, with the expectation of the reimbursement of 75% of that expense back into the accumulated building fund through the United Judicial Systems Court Security Grant, reducing the county's net cost to $102,210.47 upon project completion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Any further comments from the public? Here are none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks.
Thank you, Davis. Next, we have items from emergency service and I'll recognize Carol Bancroft and Sheriff Mueller.
Good morning, commissioners. It is still morning, right? Carol Bancroft, HR Director for Pennington County. And I come before you today that there's been many discussions about the ESCC Director position, that it is currently a state position and whether it makes more logical sense and rationale to move it to a county position. So I'm going to talk to you about what this position scores as and how it would be rated and moved on to the 2025 wage scale. And then I'll turn it over to Sheriff Mueller to talk from the user board and then we'll also have Kevin come up and give you the background of why we're even requesting this. So as far as the position, that where it rates is as a P52 Director position, which the base pay on that biweekly is $4,116.80 and that's on a biweekly basis again. And so the request that we're making today is that this would go into effect as a county position as of December 22nd, 2024, which is the beginning of the first pay period for 2025. So the motion that we would be asking is to move to approve a new position of ESCC Director at a P52 rating at $4,116.80 as the base biweekly and that would require then having an addition of one FTE to the ESCC budget. So I'll have Sheriff Mueller as well as Kevin Carley talk to how that FTE addition could be compensated for.
Mr. Mueller.
Good morning, Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff, and you're probably tired of hearing from me, so I'll try to keep my comments brief. I'm currently the chairman of the ESCC Joint Committee, which is a committee comprised of Rapid City Police Department, Rapid City Fire Department, Pennington County Sheriff's Office, Pennington County Fire, it has a commissioner on it, city council person in the state of South Dakota through the Highway Patrol. And as you know, a lot of you were part of the process through both emergency management and through ESCC in the past, we've rotated those positions around from city to county. And then most recently, when, when Kevin came onboard, we created the state position when we did the merger with the Highway Patrol through their dispatch services. And our user board has talked about this for really the last couple of years, trying to find the right time to potentially transition Kevin's position back over to a county position. And the entire users board unanimously agreed at the last meeting to bring this forward to the commission and I support it.
And just to be clarified, this request on the agenda is for the reclassification, it's not an appointment? New position?
It is a new county position because currently it's a state position.
Would go away.
Correct. And I'll let Kevin come up and...
I got, I'm gonna let them finish and I'll go to the board.
I didn't know.
Morning, Kevin Carley, Director, ESCC. Back in 2015, when the, when the county first contracted with the state to supply state radio services for the western half of the state, initially, there was a few bumps on the road in that transition and the Highway Patrol was new on the user board and the whole process of Pennington County dispatching for state radio was new. Like I said, there was bumps in the road and there was some people that were being vocal at the time, me being one of them. And the decision was made to, on the basis that the sheriff just described, one of the agencies supplying an FTE, because the merger wasn't working as well, the decision was made to ask the Highway Patrol to supply that FTE, which is initially what the board decided to do. The Highway Patrol agreed. And so that FTE transitioned from the county to the state. And, but from a funding perspective, the county has been reimbursing DPS for that position. So every month, the ESCC, or excuse me, the Department of Public Safety invoices the county, invoices our department and we reimburse the state for those. So the, the position is already being funded by the county, so there wouldn't, there wouldn't necessarily be any increase in the funding. And so all we're asking for is the FTE so we can move that back into that position again. And as I said at the time, what was occurring, not only were there some problems with the merger, but if you, for those of you that recall, at the time, turnover was 30% in that department, some of the major user agencies were unhappy, there was a morale problem. And I think part of the decision to bring somebody in from outside was to maybe the fresh perspective could help solve that problem. So I think at the time, it was the right thing to do, but I think as we've progressed through the last eight years and I think that things have gotten a lot better, I think the user agencies are a lot more satisfied and I think we have things firing all cylinders over there, so I think it's a good time to transition him back to a county position.
Okay, Ms. Haggard.
So did they reimburse us for the biweekly of $4,116.80?
No, my, the state, the salary that I currently get from the state is slightly less than that.
Okay, and what is, what is your...
My annual salary, my annual salary is $96,900, or excuse me, $97,600.
And this would put you at 121. Okay, and so I'm going to ask you the, the question, how come you didn't do it during, when we did the wage scale?
The JPA that was signed between Department of Public Safety and Pennington County specified that the director had to be an employee of the Department of Public Safety. This year, 2024, that agreement was up for renewal, so as part of that renewal, we changed the wording in that, so now that, that the director can be an employee of Pennington County or an employee of any of the four major user agencies. And that agreement was, was approved by this board back in September, I believe. So now we're able to do that, where previously, we weren't able to do that.
So September is when we changed it and then the board, three of the board members put it in the budget for wage and the budget moving forward, so then now it's past September and now you want to add it and you have it in your budget?
The, the, my salary that I'm currently receiving is in the budget and then the, any increase that may occur can, can be absorbed.
Okay. So you went from 97 to 121, so about 30...
I just want to interject, this is for the position itself, it's not discussion on...
It has the amount, Chair.
Yeah, I'm just saying.
Okay, so the discussion is upfront, so the amount of what he's paid and what he was, was currently, people would know?
That's all I'm saying, is let's keep to the position.
The position pays $4,116.80 biweekly. I'm talking about the position. Um, Kevin, I'm asking you these questions just because the public would want to know why you would change. I'm not against it. I sound like I'm against it, but I want the public, I'll keep saying, the public should know why we have the changes, we didn't have this discussion when other people and departments got raises. These are the frank discussions you have to have because we have really good, and I said, I really like a lot of our department heads. They do a great job. This is one of them that I'd agree, I agree to. And I've seen your work and I've seen what you do and I go visit your people all the time in 911 and you guys know that by just what they do and how much I appreciate them and first responders. Kevin, I'll just say, when we needed you at the fire service board, you were there. When we needed you to figure out the radio towers and the different things, you were there. That's why I give raises because when you go above and beyond and you take your other time to go see what other people do, how they're doing it, and then just listening to your board and the innovation that you've done in your, your area to make it for your employees and other areas and a lot of the, the wage study, you already figured out way before all this even came about, you were already above and above, looking forward to what was happening before they even did a wage study. So for this, giving you this position for me is a no-brainer just because you've done your job. Other people have, like I said, you've done your job, department heads, it's how you move it forward through the public and that everybody's on, on board, so we can say these frank discussions and these things about our staff that are amazing what they do and knowing the history and been with you for a while, I can honestly say that. So thank you, Kevin, for what you do.
Sure, appreciate that.
I'm just wanting to interject, the reason why this is on the agenda as it is, is it's a new position and that's the process that, that's been adopted. So that's why it's a new position and that's what we need to do first.
Okay.
So with that, any discussion? If not, I would make the motion to approve the new position of ESCC Director as P52 rating, $4,116.80 biweekly, the additional of one FTE to ESCC and to authorize human resources to update the position listed on the file.
So moved.
I'd moved it second.
Sorry?
I got a second from Deb.
Oh, okay.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kev.
Next, we have Joe Miller from the Highway Department.
Good morning, Commissioner. Yeah, it is still morning, like a couple minutes anyways. Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Up in front of you here is an item for informational only. Our department, back in 2019 or 2020, went down the road, we utilized the DOT cameras regularly and found that while east of Rapid City, they're pretty valuable, but to the west, we don't have very many DOT, or DOT cameras that cover where our employees have to go plow snow. So our employees put their heads together and we came up with an idea to try and put cameras in strategic locations for Pennington County. And that's what you see in front of you here. We submitted that to the local LTAP, Local Transportation Assistance Program and we were, we graciously received the state and, the award for the state and the region in South Dakota and then nine other counties, so.
Well, I just want to take the moment, Joe, to praise your group for the innovation that they've done and the creativity, not only to save man-hours for yourself, but to get instant response from that and having these other areas or the state and even nationally recognize the hard work that you did, it's outstanding. I think, I looked at the design of it and I think that's, that's pretty creative, it takes time. I mean, I'm sure you had some people come together and I don't know if you can patent it, but I think that might be something to do. But to be able to look at the weather conditions on an on-time basis that quick, I think took some innovation and drive from your staff, so I, we really appreciate that.
Yeah, it's, it was our staff that created it, so that's why we brought it forward and it's, it's a good thing for our department.
Anybody else have any discussion?
Yes, congratulations. Good job.
Thank you.
We do, we do have this plaque for you guys, so I'll bring that down.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's called a match.
Nice job, yeah.
What?
I don't know yet, maybe.
Tell him you would.
Is there anything else you want to share on that, Joe?
No, I just appreciate our staff's hard work and their innovation. That's one of our core values at our department is innovation, so continually looking for new ways and different ways to do things, so.
So that brings us up to item B.
Item B is an award recommendation for a fencing contract for South Rockerville Road. This was actually brought to us by the Forest Service. They had some money available to put towards this in the amount of $140,000 that they needed someplace to put it and this would help, so it would help the Forest Service and help Pennington County by reducing the amount of miles that are in open range. I don't know the amount of miles that are in open range in Pennington County, but I know it's quite a few. We've, we've removed, this will remove, I think, be 18 miles total in the last three years that we removed from open range. So it's a good thing for the county and it's a good thing for the Forest Service and the traveling public to be able to do this. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Joe? If not, I'd entertain a motion to, on this item.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to award FNC 2024, South Rockerville, Fencing and Elite Repair and Fabrication LLC, Rapid City, South Dakota.
I'll go ahead and then call for vote, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Need a second.
You can get a second.
Excuse me, can I get a second?
Second?
Oh, yeah, I'll second.
Okay, now that I got a first and a second, I'll go ahead and, and all in favor indicates by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, the same, motion carried. On to item C.
Item C is authorization to advertise and let a bridge replacement, 52-511-280. This bridge is on Highway 1416 just east of Box Elder. It is a load-rated bridge, as stated previously in our five-year plan, I think this came up. This bridge is actually in fair condition, so it doesn't qualify for Bridge Improvement Grant funding because of that reason. The reason it's load-rated is the change from the federal government and how they, the engineers are required to look at bridges. If there's a plan set available, they have to look at that and take that data and, and use that to load-rate the bridges. And since this bridge was actually built in 1924, as you can imagine, trucks back in 1924 were a lot lighter than what we have now. So the, the rebar in it isn't what it should be and that's the reason that it's load-rated. So we're actually going to use 100% local funds to replace this rather than waiting for it to fall into poor condition and request big funds. This is a major truck route to the rubble site north of Box Elder. So right now, that, those trucks are detoured through the town of Box Elder to get to that rubble site, so with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
How come it didn't qualify for any of the road fund, bridge grant money?
Uh, it's rated in fair condition, so to be eligible for the bridge improvement grant funding, it has to be rated in poor condition.
So even with it being load-rated, that doesn't bring it down to poor because of the circumstances?
It's in fair condition overall. The load rating is just one point that they look at for the overall bridge condition.
All right.
Is there any further questions for Joe?
And if I may.
Go ahead.
We did also pursue, I believe it was a raise grant, Sean, do you remember what the name of that grant was? There was a grant available. There was a grant available to, but you had to, I think, a minimum of $3 million worth of projects. So we looked at the entire corridor of 1416 and then trying to bundle... So, we looked at the entire corridor of 1416 and then trying to bundle them all together. And then I don't remember exactly what disqualified us off the top of my head, but we were disqualified for that one for a reason as well. So, we did pursue other avenues before electing to just do this one with local funds, so.
Any further questions? Now, I'd go back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chair, move to authorize the Highway Department to advertise and let bids for bridge replacement for Bridge 52-511-280.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Any further comment from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Item D.
Item D is a maintenance and use agreement for a piece of property on Pennington Street. It's at the corner of Pennington and Twilight on the County Heights Drainage Ditch. These individuals have been using this piece of property for as long as I can remember and for many people at the Highway Department, as long as they can remember. This is actually a benefit for the landowners or the users and the County Highway Department because otherwise those trailers and campers would be parked on the side of the street hindering our snow removal. So, if they agree to maintain it like they've always done, we have no issue with it, so.
Any questions? Seeing none, I go back to the board.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve the maintenance and use agreement for Pennington County Parcel Number 3803459009, allowing vehicle trailer parking in exchange for lot maintenance.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Laster. Any further comment? I have no public comment. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item E.
Item E is our equipment purchase plan. So, this has come in front of you about every two years, three years. Just trying to keep up with the inflation numbers and keep accurate numbers on this. In the past, we haven't always projected that inflation out, so that's one change that you've seen on this plan in front of you. Another change is, excuse me, we've added skid steers in our mini excavators as far as, as well as our snow blower equipment that's aging. We had a change in leadership in our shop, so I tasked him with taking a good, hard look at this equipment purchase plan well into the future to nail down, to see if we're hitting the marks where we need to be. So, that's what you see in front of you here is just an update to that and projecting that inflation all the way out to 10 years from now so we get accurate budget numbers and we can try and stay within our budget that we like to spend on equipment every year. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions for Joe? Hearing none, I go back to the Commission for motion. Mr. Drews.
Move to approve the Highway Department Equipment Purchase Plan 2025-2034.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Laster. Any further discussion? Seeing no public comment, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item F.
Item F, shop staff assistant, or, excuse me, parts manager request. The original FTE for our shop staff assistant, this role was created in 2020 and was originally focused on largely clerical stuff and parts running and just assisting our mechanics in their day-to-day. And as that, we've got a new person in that role, I think we're on our second person in that role. The original one left to go be with family, I think in Washington somewhere, but the second person has a lot of experience in the parts world, has been a parts manager for other entities, and is just our go-to guy to go find stuff, the hard-to-find stuff. He's invaluable to our shop and actually our maintenance workers throughout the county. He's, this role is kind of our asset management for the shop. He manages all the parts, our shop foreman doesn't have to oversee that stuff anymore. So, this role has largely evolved into a parts manager's role, and we'd just like to update the job description to reflect that and his current job duties. So, with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
So, the current position that's filling this, what is that position?
It is a shop staff assistant is what it is currently labeled.
Okay.
Any further questions? Seeing none, I come back to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve the new position of Highway Parts Manager at S 32 rating, base pay $24 an hour effective December 22, 2024, and authorize Human Resources to update the position listing on file.
It's been moved.
Second.
Seconded by Ross Connect. Any further discussion? Hearing none, any public? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Motion carries with one no.
Thank you.
Next, this brings us up to item 14, and this is the, comes from the Compensation Committee.
Morning, Commission. Sandy Sortland, Senior HR Manager. This is something that we discussed at the last Commission meeting. This is the motion, the action meeting to approve this policy change.
Is there any questions for Sandy?
Chair.
Ms. Haggar.
So, how many of the departments have you talked to and employees about the changes?
We haven't discussed this with any specific employees in regards to the policy. We don't normally do that when we're making a policy change. This was actually originally looked at by the Compensation Committee at the request of Commissioner Laster.
Okay. So, the significant other and the power of attorney, I did check with some of the department heads and some of the employees, and I don't think it's a good idea, and I agree with what the employees that have came up and visited with me about this. So, I think there should have been something where you had meetings on some of this stuff instead of just some of the department heads because not all have their input on some of this. And plus, some people aren't going to say to the committee what they think in that committee at some times, which is unfortunate, because they don't want people to get mad at them on issues that they don't agree with. So, I'm not, I'm with them, I'm not going to agree with this. I think both those were changed for individuals instead of a policy that should have been made for the employees as a full. Thank you.
I would like to point out that the significant other has actually been a part of this policy since 2017.
Yep, I know. I've been here. Thank you.
Mr. Laster.
Mr. Chair, I remember after our last meeting, we actually went over to HR and had some conversation. I thought there was going to be some changes to it. What did I miss in that conversation?
There, you had asked that we make sure that there was some kind of documentation required for the medical POA, which is actually already part of the policy, when I looked back at it. So, it does say that documentation of the medical POA and the individual's need for assistance will be required to support this request. So, that is actually part of the first paragraph.
And that was already in there beforehand? Or is that what was added after the original presentation?
What you and I had talked about was also going to be, we had talked about that it would also be given to the department heads as part of the supervisor handbook that HR is continuing to work on.
Okay, so they don't have that?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Laster.
Yeah. No, I just, I just was wanting to know how this is going to impact other departments as well. I mean, I think it's important, I don't remember if I explained my situation, I'm the POA of a person who's not a blood relative. However, I do know that there are some mitigating circumstances depending on whoever happens to be, so I'd just like to know the impact of other departments. I know the department head can make the determination, they're going to have to make a determination, but if there's any concern, I think it's important for them to let us know.
You want these to have to come to the Commission to be approved if we're going to do a personal leave for someone with a medical POA? Is that what I'm understanding?
No. What I'm getting at is that there has been some stated concern about adding that in there because it opens up just one more avenue of...
Liability.
Well, the simple fact that some of the larger departments, we could have multiple people that this would impact, and so now they've got to make major staffing changes due to situations happening. So, I know that's come across my desk and apparently it's come across Commissioner Haggar's as well. So, I guess I'd like some feedback to make sure that it doesn't seem like this policy adding another layer of potential, or the county is saying, here's another layer of avenue that you can use as an exception to the policy. Maybe that's the better term. I don't know if anybody else has heard anything about that. I mean...
Chair, maybe I can explain some of that.
I'll speak before I go back to you for a second time. Just for the fact that I, being part of the Compensation Committee, I've heard the discussions and that was thoroughly vended. I mean, concerns and it was consensus of the committee. But, yeah, there was discussion on there could be possibly abuse of something or with the number of employees, but I think the consensus was that department heads know their employees and this gives them the, part of the tools to be able to either help or say no, but ultimately the department's overseeing them and they will know their staff.
And just to follow up with that, if we don't put in there that there's a capability for them to have exception to the policy with a POA, then does that take it out of the department head's option to make the determination?
That would be my interpretation, yes. If we don't have anything in here about the medical POA being a reason that someone could use personally, they wouldn't be able to at all, which is why we had put it in here to begin with. Otherwise, there hadn't been any other changes to this policy.
Okay.
Ms. Haggar.
I stated last time, I looked it up and it does not recommend, HR recommend a POA in a policy. Significant other, there were some other statements in there, but that's the data, as we keep saying. Why they say that is because of the liability. And now we've opened ourselves up because the sheriff's office, if he can do three of them, but he can't do two more, what happens? And I know he had that discussion with people about how many people in Comp Committee, and that was his worry, or a lot of the departments that have more employees, and what happens? Sandra gets it, but Deb doesn't because we can't afford it right now because we don't have enough employees to be able to do that. So, what happens? You're opening yourself up, and it does say that when you read all that about the liability, you're committing for the county when you make exceptions to state and federal law. And I talk to attorneys, not just HR directors or internet. So, just food for thought, that's why I won't be voting for it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd make the motion to approve the Policy 43B Personal Leave as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries with one no or two?
Just one.
Just one, one no. Next is item B, the Amendment to the Compensation Committee Bylaws. I'll recognize Carol Bancroft.
Good morning again, Commission. Carol Bancroft, HR Director for Pennington County. So, this is the second reading on this particular request from the Compensation Committee about revisions to the bylaws, and the committee did work with Jay Alderman for legal counsel in drafting this recommended revision. And so, what I'm looking for today is to have a motion to approve the Commission Chair to sign the amended Compensation Committee bylaws to be effective January 1 of 2025.
Is there any questions for Carol?
Chair.
Ms. Haggar.
This is Damon. So, at first, when John came here, I agreed with taking the Compensation Committee off because it took away his job description, a lot of it, and put it on the burden of other people that were in the committee instead of him making his own decisions, which he wanted to do. I still believe that. I did try this, and after being on that committee, I feel the same thing. I don't believe in that there should be a Compensation Committee. I think HR Director and this board can get input from the employees, from the department heads. So, we're getting all the employees and all the department heads that want to be able to have a voice. Sometimes in the committee, that doesn't happen, and since I've been here, and that's why John did it as well, wanted to dissolve it, is I see that's happening again, and it just was said today that they did not ask the other department heads, it wasn't, it was the committee that made that decision. So, I'm not in agreement with the Compensation bylaws effective or the Compensation Committee moving forward at this point. So, I'm going to be up straight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your insight.
My comment would be, after being a part of it this last year, I think there's great conversation and great input from all departments, and you've had great people coming in and just sitting off to the side and still getting the input, and I think it's been valuable. That's my point from being on the committee.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I'd move to approve the amended Compensation Committee bylaws effective January 1, 2025.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I do believe the Compensation Committee serves a very factual purpose and one that's been very good for the county, so, thank you.
Mr. Chair. Carol, I assume the members of the Compensation Committee reach out to department heads. I mean, I assume it's that transparent. It's not like the department heads are totally left in the dark.
No matter of fact, we have great participation from other department heads that come to the meeting, and the committee has been very good about taking their input as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Laster.
Mr. Chair, I think I have mixed feelings about the Compensation Committee. So, at this point in time, I don't think I'm going to be supporting about it. I think it could have been good if there would have been a lot more upfront stuff. I had to ask a lot of questions, which is what we should be doing, but I still also feel like there should have been a lot more public hearing, public input for what went on. So, at this point in time, I'm going to be a no if we can't put something in there that says anything that's dealing with compensation, gets a good full briefing to the public.
Okay. We do have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
Motion carries with two no's.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Next, we have items from Commission Manager Holly Hennies.
Missed one. Guidelines.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, excuse me. Sorry. I jumped past you, didn't I?
You were waiting all morning and he just jumped past you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Brand Guidelines. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Cody Wiseman, HR Marketing Manager, I'm going to pull up this presentation here.
Chair, he's pulling up his presentation. Can I say something?
What's the pretend to?
It's positive. It's positive.
What was my signal for you?
You won't let me say it?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I've never met Brand before. Thank you for calling me. Very thorough, very informational on what he was talking about. He also said if you have any other questions, Brand, then I pulled it up, and you did an awesome job.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you for the presentation today, but just your presentation and what you had sent to me said it all. So, I appreciate all the work you did and the brand you put out there. I think it looks pretty cool, and it fits the team in Pennington County and how our brand looks right now, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, well, yeah, so today I'm just here to kind of go over some of the brand guidelines. This is a presentation really to get these approved. Essentially, we've never had anything like this before, so this is really just kind of getting something down so that other departments have a resource to use if they choose to design something. So, first, just going to kind of go through, talk a little bit about the purpose of brand guidelines. So, first off, identity. As a government entity, you know, trust is our foundation. A cohesive brand identity helps us to present a united and reliable voice, reinforcing the trust that our citizens place in us. Again, consistency, so with 19 different departments, maintaining a consistent brand is definitely essential. A unified approach ensures that our message is always recognizable and trustworthy, no matter what department is communicating. And then third, efficiency. So, in our busy organization, efficiency is key. Our brand guidelines streamline the creative process, saving time and ensuring every department produces consistent, high-quality content. One thing that specifically I want to mention is individuality, so I under... So I understand that there's many different departments that have their own logos, they have their own brandings. Essentially, this is just a tool for those departments who don't necessarily have that. And if there's ways where we can incorporate the brand of Pennington County into those individual departments as well, just again, really goes with that cohesive feel of everything. And I did have a chance to present this entire presentation to the department heads as well. They were all in favor for it. We had some really good discussion on some of the logos and everything as well, and those all got resolved. So going forward, once this is, you know, if it gets approved, I would be sending them out to all the department heads for them to have all the resources we have. And as well, again, I mentioned, we never had anything like this. This is what we previously had is just a logo document, really just explains all the different logos that we have, didn't go into anything with fonts, colors, you know, actual materials, anything like that. So we'll go ahead and dive directly into the brand guidelines. I am going to read through a lot of this just because this will be a tool that will be delivered to the department heads and their respective employees for them to use. So Pennington County, our mission, the mission of Pennington County, South Dakota, is to provide quality public services as determined by law and citizen needs. Through innovative leadership and the teamwork of its people, officials, and employees, services shall be provided in a fair, respectful, and professional manner consistent with available human, natural, and economic resources. So, brand introduction. Welcome to the Pennington County Brand Guidelines. As a government organization, serving the Black Hills and Badlands of South Dakota, our mission is to provide quality public services with innovative leadership and teamwork. These guidelines are designed to ensure consistency across all departments, fostering a unified and professional identity. By adhering to these standards, we strengthen our communication and reinforce the trust and respect of our citizens. Brand identity. Our brand identity is rooted in our commitment to excellence, integrity, and community service. Our unified visual and verbal communication reflects the natural beauty of the Black Hills and our dedication to serving our citizens with professionalism and respect. So diving into our logo. Our logo symbolizes Pennington County's natural beauty and vibrant community. It embodies our commitment to preserving our heritage while providing exceptional service to our citizens. In here, this is one of the things that I am proposing to change. So right now, we do have our main logo, which would still, of course, stay as our main logo. Very often, you have brands will have five or six different iterations of the logo to fit specific needs. So what I'm proposing is a simplified version on the left, just to be used whenever deemed necessary, really wherever it fits in a better horizontal position. And then, of course, we also have our official seal. And then showing these are just on our different brand colors that we have, just the different logos. So there's the full logo. Here is that simplified version, more horizontal. And then our seal in different colors as well. So these color palettes, these colors harmonize to reflect the natural beauty of the Black Hills and Badlands, combining the warmth of the sunrise with the earthy tones of the landscape. These colors should be used consistently across all media to maintain brand integrity. What you can see here, these colors are actually pulled directly from our website and is all of this stuff, except for that additional logo, is stuff that we already use, just really trying to enhance and give a better direction as far as how to use it. You can see right there in the middle that there is a white box around some of those color codes. Those are our standard colors that we have and all the other ones are shades that can be used respectively as well. Using the color palette, so this is a little bit of a change as well, but while the entire color palette, including all shades, can be utilized as needed, specific colors will be more prominently featured in our brand identity. Referring to the percentages below will help everybody out. So that primary color, slate blue is our primary color, chosen for its strong association with trust and reliability. This color should be the most prominent in our designs, reflecting our commitment to building trust within the community. Then we have those secondary colors. All the other colors are secondary, providing a versatile and vibrant backdrop that supports the primary color, using them to add contrast and highlight important elements without overwhelming the overall design. And I did want to make sure, since this is going to be a tool for all the different departments, I added in this note down below, essentially what this does is gives people a link for them to check for that ADA contrast. So sometimes putting certain colors on other colors makes it extremely hard to read, so this actually gives a tool to make sure that it is following ADA guidelines as well. Typeface, again, this is from our website, so Libre Vascerville is going to be mostly used for those headings in H1s, which is just a website title for headings. And then Arial is just an easy-to-read font that would be used for all the paragraphs or smaller text. Brand elements, so these are also a little bit new, but not so new because they were taken directly from the original logo. So just those hills that are there, really just kind of giving some more patterns and visual identity pieces for people to use throughout the design. You've noticed that in this design as well, and then a couple of other presentations that have come before you are utilizing these as well. So this couple of slides here is just going to be showing you how all of this fits together, what pieces would look good with that. So right away here, we have some letterhead, some logos, notepads, how that would look with these additional brand elements. You know, a mock-up for a Pennington County annual report. Again, this shows with that simplified logo there, right center just kind of looks a little bit better, especially with the symmetry of this piece and kind of fits and makes the Pennington County text a little bit larger. Here's just some mock-up posters that I was working on with nine one one, work with purpose, live with passion, utilizing that Arial font in a bold statement, and then, of course, utilizing that blue to ensure that trust. And another piece that I would be hoping to work on in the coming months, but it's Pennington County at Your Service, What We Do and How We Help, just a small little brochure that goes through all the different departments and how they aid the county, but just really showing how those design elements all work together. So what this is here is pretty much a very watered-down, simplified version of this entire presentation. So this is what's another thing that I would be giving to all the different departments, really just gives a quick snapshot of here's our logo, here's our colors, here's our fonts. That way, they have that right at their disposal if they want to print it out or if they just want to have it on their desktop, whatever, to make it quick without having to go through all twenty pages of this presentation. And then lastly, just some do's and don'ts. So do use the official color palette, keep that typography consistent, make sure we have consistent messaging, don't modify the logo, don't use inappropriate colors, or have conflicting messages. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Is there any questions for Cody? Thank you very much. And we really appreciate it, Ms. Hagcock, because just at the beginning, you reaching out very early, wanting to talk to the Commissioners, that makes a big difference in our world. Unfortunately, I didn't have my agenda yet when you called, so I couldn't. But no, the outreach for that, very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Hagcock.
Move to approve the Pennington County Guidelines, including the addition of a New Horizon Verizon of the Pennington County logo.
Take it.
Moved by Hagcock, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us up to sixteen A, items from Commission Manager Holly Hennies.
Yeah, Commissioners, we're at the time of the year where we need to make a decision on your meeting schedule for next year. I've just continued to follow our typical pattern on when we schedule hearings. So you have the proposed 2025 meeting dates in front of you. In addition, this year, we typically don't bring planning commission meeting schedules to you, but it is being proposed to change the rotation from a one-month to a two-month rotation on the planning commission. The thought process behind that change is with an item is continued to be more efficient and effective for the Commissioners' times, to not be playing catch-up and to be able to follow or conclude the item through. So with that, I wanted to let the board know that I did reach out to the two new incoming Commissioners on how that would affect them for the planning commission rotation. One of them feels that it is a great ideal and supports it. The other, I have not heard a response back from.
Okay.
So with that, I would stand for any questions the board may have, but we're looking for a motion to approve the 2025 meeting dates and to approve switching to a two-month rotation for the Commissioners sitting on the planning commission.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
I, by, in general, I have no problem with the schedule because it's probably similar to what they're always, a regular schedule. However, I don't know if I'm willing to vote on committing any of their predecessors to a two-month rotation on planning and zoning unless I hear from them. So I may just abstain purely from that aspect. I don't want to commit them to something that I don't, you know, they don't, may not have input on, so.
Chair.
Mr. Drews.
So I like the idea. I think that it brings a little more consistency. It doesn't, it doesn't make any Commissioners or any more time on the planning commission. It's just more consistent. Following up, essentially, you'd have four meetings in a row in the planning commission as your obligation. So I like it.
Chair.
Ms. Hagcock.
I also believe that we shouldn't vote on this. I think the other two should have the input, not people, a couple of people that are leaving. Number two, some of us aren't retired and some of us, that's a lot of meetings in two months to plan for every Monday, when my Mondays usually are the busiest time for me to decide that I can take four of those meetings to a month already. So trying to hit just the six meetings we have, plus the meetings from the constituents and everything else right now, I like it broke up. I think until the other ones know that as well, so what that means to their schedules, because both of them have jobs. So I would say to continue this until the first of January or seventh of January, to let them decide because on the meetings, we might be switching some meetings because of other stuff as well, so not just planning commission stuff. So for me, I won't be voting, I'll be voting no today. I also would like to hear from them. And I know one at least has been on planning commissions and stuff, so I'd like to hear from them.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
I understand where Commissioner Hagcock's coming from, so could we continue this until we've heard from the other one? Then we'd have a full consensus.
Mr. Chair, if possible.
Instead of wait until the first, if we can hear before the first, it'd probably help us plan.
Could we separate the two items and have the board approve the 2025 commission meeting dates and then we'll bring back the planning commission rotation for the other members when I do hear back. Commissioner Dur, elect Dur, was the one that was in supportive of it, and I've sent two emails to Commissioner Wyffenbach and just, he's a busy man, haven't received a response back from him yet, but Commissioner Dur was very supportive of the idea.
I think.
That we can separate the two.
Yeah, I would suggest separating the two because you need to get the schedule going and out there so people can plan and if that's okay with the Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I move to approve the 2025 Board of Commissioners' meeting dates as presented.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lassiter. Any further comment? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, this brings us up to the request for the parade of lights participation.
Yeah, thank you Commissioners for adding this item on at the last moment. County has participated in the parade of lights for many years now, and we were going to take a break this year, but we, my understanding is they've come up with a good idea and were able to pull it together. So the request in front of you today is to approve the Festival of Lights Parade participant application and to approve the chair's signature on the participants' indemnification, statement of financial responsibility, and waiver. Just for full public notice, no taxpayer dollars are used for the floats. All supplies and the application fee are either donated by the employees or purchased with funds donated by employees.
Is there any questions on this? I can say, I think last year they sat it out, but in prior years, there was a lot of participation in it, so I think it, I thought it was very good after sitting out a year that they decided they wanted to try it again. I think that's a good deal. They always putting the floats together, they have a food fee, and kids come, and so it was very good. So I'd look to the board for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
Move to approve the Festival of Lights Parade participant application and to approve the chair's signature on the participant identification, indemnification, statement of financial responsibility, and waiver.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Roskin.
No.
That was me.
I heard.
Oh, I didn't hear him. I'm sorry.
So I got Roskin as a second. And is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, this brings us up to items from public, and I have no public speaker forms. Is there anybody that'd like to speak? Seeing none, I would look for a motion to take about a ten-minute break for planning to set up.
Chairman.
Ms. Hagcock.
I'm going to leave, if that's okay. I have a major headache and I'm going to go lay down and I apologize. I appreciate, yeah, earlier I took some ibuprofen, but that's why I went back so long. It's not going away. So I appreciate that you guys are taking the break. I just tried to make it to the break. Thank you.
Thank you. So I need a motion to take a break?
So move.
Second.
Okay, now I heard the second. Moved by Roskin, seconded by Lassiter, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Look for a motion to come back into session.
So move.
I had two moves, but I'll take. Mr. Roskin moved, seconded by Lassiter, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. At this time, the Commission utilized speaker request form, we're coming to planning commission items. If you'd like to speak on any item, please fill out a speaker request form located at the bookshelf in the back of the chambers, and we're returning to Commission Manager Holly Hennies located at the right side of the desk. This brings us into planning and zoning items. It was supposed to be at ten thirty? No, I'm just kidding. Item A, consent agenda, you had nothing to do with that.
I recognize Brittany. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The planning and zoning consent agenda contains the following three items. Item A is conditional use permit review C U R ten twenty-three for Reynolds &amp; Livingston LLC, Chris Livingston to review a recreational vehicle park with four RV sites, and the planning commission recommended to end conditional use permit review C U R ten twenty-three. Item B is preliminary plan C O P P L twenty-four dash zero 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 three for Par Properties LLC, Paul Zweffel, and All Aspects Inc. is the agent to subdivide and create lots one, two, and three of Par Properties' subdivision, and the planning commission recommended approval. Item C is planning and development overlay review P U R twenty-two dash zero eight for Black Hills Tiny Resort LLC, Jolene Zoller, and is to review a recreational resort, and the planning commission recommended approval.
Thank you, Brittany. At this time, is there any members of the public who wish to remove any items from the planning consent agenda? Seeing none, I'd go to the Commission. Is there any of the Commissioners who wish to remove any items from the planning consent agenda for further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Lassiter.
Move to approve the planning consent agenda as presented.
I got a motion and a second by Drews. Any discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we come to regular planning consent, our contested hearings, and I'll recognize Cody.
Cody Sack, Government Planner. Item nineteen A is vacation of section line right-of-way C O V S L twenty-four dash zero 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 five. It's to vacate approximately three hundred and thirty-nine to three hundred and seventy-five feet of a section line right-of-way. The applicant and landowner is Matt and Regina Crowell. Location of the property is one, two, three, zero, three Deerfield Road. Current zoning is rural residential district with an existing land use of residential. Access is off Deerfield Road and there is a hundred-year flood plan on the property. The request was written or offered under Department Review. The county highway said that while the department is typically opposed to vacating any section line right-of-way due to topography and plating, it is unlikely that it'll be, this will be utilized for roadway construction. It should just be verified that no public utilities exist within the existing section of the section line right-of-way and parcel within old Deer, is in, is within old Deerfield Road District. The applicants are requesting, again, to vacate three hundred and thirty-nine to three hundred and seventy-five feet. That difference is because of how the lot is. The lot cuts off at a diagonal, so it's longer on one side than the other. Uh, the lot cuts off at a diagonal, so it's longer on one side than the other side. Uh, the portion of the section line does not provide access to any properties in the area or to public land. Um, the portion of section line on the two adjacent properties to the south have been vacated. Uh, therefore the section line dead ends on this property. Uh, one of those was done February 3rd, 2015, and one was done August 6th of, uh, 2024. Uh, so what that is, is there's a property, um, this property to the south and this section line has all been vacated. Uh, so they're just vacating, uh, to the rest of it. Uh, so what that staff does recommend approval of, uh, vacation of section line right of way C O V S L 24 dash 005 with conditions.
Is there any ques- questions for Cody? I'd come back to the commission for a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Durs.
I'd follow the, uh, staff recommendation on that and, uh, approve that vacation of section line right of way. C O V S L 24 dash 0005 with two conditions.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Cody. Now we, I'll recognize Brittany on the ordinance.
Item 19B is public hearing of ordinance amendment OA 24 dash 11 for Pennington County. Is to amend section 204F, the dead-end road systems of the zoning ordinance. Um, this language was also added into our subdivision regulations. Um, and part of this was to update the section. Uh, to require mitigation measures on a dead-end road system. In addition, um, the existing text, um, used the must not exceed 40 dwelling units and two miles in cumulative length. And the change is for or, so either or would have to apply instead of both, um, for it to be considered a dead-end road system. Uh, in addition to that, uh, under the section, if there is, if it is located within a fire protection district. Um, a fire mitigation plan would have to be approved, um, at the time of the building permit application. And then if it is in a flood hazard area, uh, the dead-end road system, uh, the road system beyond the initial hazard, so say there's a bridge. Or a boundary for the special flood hazard area cannot provide access to more than 40 dwelling units. Um, so for example, on this one, if you look at Bradsky Road, there are several lots, uh, to the north of the initial bridge. So those lots to the north wouldn't be included in the 40. It would be anything after the bridge because that would be the initial hazard. Um, just for some clarification on that. And with this too, even though that there are mitigation men- measures. It would still require a variance, uh, by the Board of Adjustment. Um, if either the section is longer than two miles in cumulative length or there's more than 40 dwelling units. So with that, uh, the planning commission did recommend approval and, um, so does staff.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Uh.
Brittany, uh, this brings up that gentleman's question off of Sheridan Lake Road, uh, where they wanted to do the 11 lots. And it seemed like it was more restrictive when you use the word or opposed to and, and I've never got a chance to get with you, but. For example, you know, when we were dealing with a lot of stuff over by Rockerville. It says a dead-end road system in all zoning districts, a dead-end road must not exceed 40 dwelling units. But where, when did we incorporate the two miles in cumulative length? Because I don't remember seeing that two years ago or three years ago. So. And I think that was his question. Uh, well, his question was how can or be more restrictive than and when you look at the 40 units and the two miles?
Sure. So the two miles in cumulative length goes all the way back to when the subdivision regulations were approved back in 2013. So that has been in our ordinance since 2013. Um, when you look at it, it, both of them would have to apply for it to be out of compliance. So the question that he had in the situ- in his situation, um, is because it was so close. Um, they did actually have a surveyor, um, go out and survey all of the road lengths, um, in that subdivision and it came back as 1.87. So because it wasn't and, meaning they have to meet both of the requirements for it to be considered a dead-end road system. Now with or, it, in order for it to be considered a dead-end road system, either could apply.
So or would be easier to follow.
Yes, and it would be, so it would be either. So like in the instance that, um, he is concerned about. It would have been, they would have met the 40 units. So it would have been considered a dead-end road system and a variance would have been required. But because it was and, both of them didn't apply, only one of the standards applied.
So did anybody get a copy of that survey that showed 1.87 miles?
Yes, staff did get a copy as part of the file.
Okay. So let's just say on that, uh, Neck Yoke Road, you know, we got these roads that go south off of that. There's a couple of them. And if somebody comes in and they want a building permit and they've already got, there's already 40 units, but one of those lots are within that two miles, they could still probably get the building permit?
No, they would have to come in and get a variance. And then if it isn't within the fire protection district, they would have to have a fire mitigation plan. And an approved variance to get a building permit.
So no matter how close they were actually to Neck Yoke Road, which is a main arterial.
Correct.
Any further questions for Brittany?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Durs.
I still think that the, the language, I don't know how to further clarify it. But it's very difficult to, to understand how this actually applies each time.
With the 40-unit rule.
Yep.
Because the one that we're talking about, I think there's 187 units.
Correct.
So that really exceeds 40 and I'm just really scratching my head how this works because it's like we just sit there and kind of make it work when we want to. But we can make it more difficult when we don't. I mean, I'm just trying to think of some of the problems that we've had south of the Neck Yoke Road.
Right, and those ones, some of those ones on Neck Yoke probably would have, and I, and I can't say that without looking at which roads they were. Um, would have been over the two miles in cumulative length. Um, a lot of those, because you have to come back to the arterial. Um, so you have to have the area where you have two, uh, means of ingress and egress. Um, without looking at those, I wouldn't know. But yes, in the existing text, both standards would have to apply for it to be considered a dead-end road system. In the new text, only one would have to apply for it to be defined as a dead-end road system.
So does this apply both within the three-mile jurisdiction of Rapid and outside the three-mile jurisdiction?
So this is in our zoning ordinance. So this would be for dwelling units for building permits. So yes, it would. Our subdivision regulations would not apply. It would be the city subdivision regulations that would apply in the, um, three-mile plating jurisdiction. So in this instance, if they platted through the city of Rapid City and they got a variance, um, I believe, I don't know, they're making some changes to their 40-unit rule requirements as well. Um, but if they did get a, um, a variance with the city, they would still, if they planned on building a dwelling unit, they would still have to come in to the Board of Adjustment and get a variance. And if it's in a fire protection district or a flood hazard area, they would have to meet those mitigation measures as well, in addition to getting an approved variance.
So with the improved building techniques and fire suppression techniques. Could we change the 40-unit to 60-unit? I mean, is that set at 40 or is it possible that it could be changed sometime to meet current industry standards?
Well, if they, having these mitigation measures would give the Board of Adjustment that purview and that, that flexibility to decide whether some of the new technology, because that could be part of their mitigation plan. And the Board of Adjustment could use that in their decision to approve or deny.
Good, thank you.
Because Brittany, I, this has been an issue for God knows how long. And I, I don't think it's anything that this commission done or any one person's done. I think it's our top actuary, you know, we live in the hills and, and to build in the hills or in certain areas. You can only do so much for second access and so forth. But then we also have some flat land where then we try to be, say you gotta do it the same way as that, where maybe that's why we come up with the 40 units. I don't know. But I'm not opposed to the variance because I think, you know, I think that's part of our job as a commissioner is if something doesn't meet the code, we have a standard and they have to come to us, like make us aware of what's happening. Yeah, it's a pain to the citizens, but when you have public safety and so forth. I think, uh, to have those discussions and, and do the variance, I think is appropriate. You know, I think that's part of our job, even though we don't want to hear it every other month.
Well, it does give the Board of Adjustment some discretion in looking at whatever mitigation that they're providing. Or, um, requesting as part of their request.
Yeah, because you could ask them what they're doing and get more detailed information of what's happening.
And you can condition a variance. So if those mitigation member, measures are part of that variance, that would be a requirement when they came to get their building permit, so.
Okay. Is there any further questions for Brittany? Seeing none, I'd come back to the board. For a motion.
Chair.
Mr. Durs.
I'd move to approve ordinance amendment OA 24 dash 11.
Second.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Lassiter. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
I'd all set out. I voted no on the planning commission.
Did you? Okay, this brings us up to item 20, which is items from chair, commission members. Uh, time for individual members to bring forth ideas or concerns to the full board. Official action will not be taken on any issue brought forth at this time. Direction may be given to bring back before the board for future consideration. Is there any commissioners that have any items they'd like to discuss? Seeing none, I'll go to midi, meeting and committee reports and I'll recognize Mr. Lassiter.
So Central State's Fair Board, um, they sent out a message to move it from Monday to Tuesday because of the holiday. And that was a conflicting meeting with me from my regular work, so I was unable to make that one. Uh, I did have the building committee meeting. However, most, everything that was discussed in the building committee meeting, we all heard today. There's a couple of things that were not heard, um, with the 900 Concourse property. Um, there, I believe they secured the tree variance for the amount of greenery that had to be on the property. And I think they're still working through the sidewalk variance on that one. Um, I also went to, um, that's not on here, but I went to the, um, Box Elder PFAS water meeting. Um, the base had a public meeting for all those that are impacted. Uh, basically given a water line update and everything of that nature. So I was there for that. It was a good meeting. The public that, that's in that local area were there and got to ask some more questions and kind of get some timelines. And then, um, the biggest thing out of that was there are a lot of people that want to tap into that particular water line that's getting laid for those guys. Uh, but they're absolutely saying no because it's government funds for that particular water line to mitigate the PFAS, uh, issue with their water wells. So they're making sure that water line gets put in first and it services all those people without any hiccups. And then they will look at potentially allowing members to tap in, just so that y'all are aware of. Somebody says, well, how come we can't tap into that water line? Well, there's a process that we have to go because it's federal dollars for a very specific reason. Um, and then I missed the complete health, um, center board meeting. My wife's grandfather passed away. Um, and we left town that Thursday morning, so I was unable to make it to that particular meeting. So that summarizes the line.
Thank you Travis. Mr. Durs.
So I missed the, uh, because of conflict, uh, library meeting. I think that was the same day maybe as planning, but anyway. Uh, October 30th, I attended the Rapid City TIF committee. Uh, and that, that committee was presented with amendment number one to the original T I D number 83 for the Homestead Street Extension. Original purpose was to fund the design and construction of approximately 900 feet. The Homestead Street between Missoula Street and Timmins Boulevard. This TID was approved October of 2020. This amendment will increase project cost by 35% from $2,719,969 to $3,671,500, $958, a difference of nearly 952,000. Current development with the TID boundary since 2020 has included 59 single-family homes. 170 multifamily units and 7,000 square feet of retail space. The estimated future development within the TID boundary includes an additional 13 single-family homes. 248 multifamily units and five commercial properties. City Rapid City will be paying off the current TID loan, the balance of $711,090. This will be combined with amendment number one, proposed balance of $1,787,581. Uh, total loan will be $2,498,691. On October 28th, uh, planning commission approved, uh, conditional use permit for Yaro Tech. Um, one second, I lost this. For their planned solar and wind farm operation. This would be located east of Rapid City, about, uh, four miles north of Highway 44. It passed on a 42 vote, but this is just the beginning of the process to eventually locate the wind and solar on a little over a thousand acres of land. November 3rd, I attended the 4H Pennington County Recognition Event on Sunday. I witnessed dozens of young people receiving awards for their accomplishments during the past year in 4H events. Uh, November 4th, uh, was the monthly county webinar, featured Chief Justice Stephen Jensen and U G S Administrator Greg Satizant. Justice Jensen said assessments have been made in over 50 counties on how to improve security in courthouses. In addition, the court has, uh, $5 million to assist in improvements with a 25% match coming for counties. And that's exactly what we heard today or the question was. Mostly this involves securities, security cameras, doors and judges' chambers. On indigent defense, Justice Jensen has been a major proponent of transferring this responsibility from counties to the state. Establishment of a commission by the legislature has now hired Chris Miles of Sioux Falls to head up that office and he hopes to have his staff in place within the next 60 to 90 days. The $3 million approved by the legislature this year has been distributed. And I believe Pennington County received about $720,000 to reimburse some costs for indigent defense. Jensen said he was not sure where the legislature may stand in regard to further appropriations for reimbursement. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Durs. Mr. Roskinak.
I left my, uh, notes at the house, so it'll be abbreviated, but I did attend the, uh, quarterly Hill City Strategic Housing Trust Fund Meeting, which, uh, is a group of us in Hill City that created that, uh, committee and in attendance was, I think it's Greg Litten from Black Hills Area Community Foundation. And then on Zoom, we had, uh, two representatives from Lloyd's Properties. Who did a presentation of all their different facilities in Rapid City and Sioux Falls and the different layouts, uh, from. Well, they, I think they did, they have 10 or 12 models. And what we're trying to do is see if there's something that would fit in the Hill City area. We've identified a, a piece of property that might be, uh, we can work with the owner or we could purchase, but, uh, we're, uh, you know, that's how, hopefully that we can do something that would, uh, provide additional housing in Hill City, affordable and workforce. So. It was a good productive meeting. We had to create that committee in order to tap into the $20 million that was, uh, appropriated by Congress this year. And Black Hills Area Community Foundation, I believe they're, they're the conduit for those funds. And then when we proposed that we want a, a project and we go to them and they, they, they vet it. Uh, relative to Pennington County housing and redevelopment, it's pretty much typical business meeting. And an update on our restructuring. Now, one of the things Greg mentioned at that, uh, Hill City meeting was that uh, Black Hills Area Community Foundation, we have some scattered housing units and, and I know Black Hills Works is interested. And then he said they were also interested in some of those scattered units. So eventually they will, uh, be put up for sale. The Black Hills Council of Local Governments, that executive board met yesterday to discuss the 2025 wage and salaries for Jennifer and her staff. And, uh, building committee, like Travis said, we pretty much vetted that. And building committee, like Travis said, we pretty much vetted that today, so that's all I got.
Thanks, Ron. My apologies, I attended the MPO Executive Policy Committee, but I left my notes at home. The eight o'clock threw me off this morning, so I don't have my paperwork to report that out. What I can say is the MPO, one of the things they were working on is combining some public boards that needed to be, need hearing, and I think they've got the appointments done and they're working on that still. Black Hills Local Governments ended up, I had another meeting that was at the same time, so I appreciate you making that, because I wasn't able to make that run. Complete Health was pretty typical agenda items, you know, we went, approved another physician, and we went over quality assessment reports, and also the number of visits that Complete Health has received, and they expressed their appreciation to Pennington County for approving money for pharmacy, which we do, I think it was 110 this year, so they expressed how it works and how well it's doing. And I did the same thing, Gary, at the SDCC webinar, I didn't look at my email till 1 o'clock when it was already at 10, so I missed that. With that, I really don't have anything else to report. So, next on our agenda is executive session for SDCL 1-252. So, I'd look for a motion to go into executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-21 for personnel matters and SDCL 1-2523 for contractual pending litigation.
So moved.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Roskinak. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Look for motion to come out of executive session.
Moved.
Seconded.
Seconded to come out of executive session, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carry. At this time, I'd recognize Human Resources Director Carol Bancroft.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, Carol Bancroft, HR Director of Pennington County, that I would like to recommend a motion that moved to approve appointment of Kevin Carley to the ESCC director position at a P52 rating with $4,671 bi-weekly with eight years of service for vacation and sick leave benefits, and that would be effective December 22, 2024.
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Lassiter. Any discussion? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
We have nothing else on our agenda, I'd look for a motion to a Drews.
So moved.
Moved by Lassiter, seconded by Roskinak. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.